Jen, can we get a radio check?
I can hear your mark.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tim.
Good evening, everybody. The people are asking if we're on, Jen. We are. Thank you. Okay, I see Councilor Zan Miller well coiffed and clad on Zoom. Well done, Mark. Um, great. Uh, welcome to April 22nd City Council. I'll call us to order. The first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna silence our cell phones. And then we're gonna keep in mind while we're doing this business here, folks have been doing business on these lands for tens of thousands of years and now we're all here together and may we get along. Let's do a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Abigail, do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
Uh, we do not, but I want to make sure everybody has the revised agenda that was released this morning, I believe. That's been put
It has the yellow
That's exactly right.
Everybody got that? The yellow?
Excellent.
Okay. Okay, I do. Uh, looks like you have some votes to go on. Let's see.
I'll just mention that the volunteer compliance item, the voluntary compliance agreement will be moved to the end of tonight's agenda after an executive session. That's the only change.
Thank you. Uh, Abigail and I were on the phone yesterday. I was in Burns and she was, I don't know where, sorting this all out, so fairly, fairly new, breaking news and doing the best we can. Great. So the first thing always is business from the audience. I have a couple of folks
who have signed up to speak. Um, I'll start with Maza Brady and then
I'm so sorry to interrupt.
It's
Sorry. Can we start with the swearing in of police officers so we can let
Oh, we have, yes, good idea.
Come up and, and
Good, so we're just gonna shift things around a little bit. We're going to
Thank you.
Administer the oath of office to Officer Wells. Congratulations. Come on up to the front. And yes, great. Welcome aboard. I sort of wanna do the ceremony, oh, but I can use that microphone. I'm coming up. Here I come.
Are you on this one?
Good, that's where they can look at you and not me. Raise your right hand, please. I, Connor Wells.
I, Connor Wells.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And of the state of Oregon
And of the state of Oregon.
The city charter of the city of Hood River
The city charter of the city of Hood River
And the ordinances and resolutions of said cities.
The ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And that I will
And that I will
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability
Faithfully perform the duties
Faithfully perform the duties
Of police officer
A police officer.
Of the city of Hood River, Oregon
Of the city of Hood River, Oregon.
During my continuance therein
During my continuance therein
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Sir. You're right.
Oh, we need to do photos with that, yeah.
Yeah.
You did a step. If there is one else. Thanks for coming, y'all. It's nice to have you support and whatnot. Congratulations. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay. Now, this is from the audience. I have Maza and Deanna or Dina signed up, but perhaps there's some other folks who would like to speak. If so, just raise your hand and we'll get it sorted. But we'll start with Maza. Come on up. The, 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 the mic is green, so you're by. And if you could keep it to three minutes or less, that'd be great. Tell us what you'd like to say, Maza.
Yes, the great ladies and gentlemen of the Haverhill City Council. I stand before you to urge you to support the permanent ceasefire in Gaza and call for an end of genocide in Palestine. As representatives of the city of Hood River, it's our moral obligation to advocate for peace and stand against violence wherever it may occur. The town of Hood River, while geographically distant from the Middle East, is not an innocent bystander. Our thriving tech industries, which have been foundational to the city's growth, are directly involved in the production of aerial reconnaissance. These technologies, while developed for various purposes, have unfortunately been utilized to, in military operations, to perpetuate the cycle of violence in regions like Palestine. We have a responsibility to critically examine the implications of our industries and to advocate for policies that promote peace and justice on a global scale. Our silence in the face of injustice is not merely complacency. It is complicity in the perpetuation of violence and suffering. By remaining silent, we tacitly endorse the status quo and deny our responsibility to speak out against injustice. I urge each of you to consider the profound impact of your decision today. By supporting a permanent ceasefire in Palestine, we have the opportunity to be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Deanna.
Hello, Buenos tardes. Salam aleikum. My name is Dina Mahal Sager. And I've lived in Hood River for five years, working in public health, serving marginalized populations within the serving marginalized populations within the Ghorish community, until I became a mother to a now one-year-old. So as a mother, I was delighted to hear that a ceasefire resolution was even considered. This is deeply personal for me. I felt just a touch less alone in my existence here, as an indigenous Palestinian woman denied the opportunity to live in my ancestral homeland, while I watch in horror the continued livestream genocide of my people in Gaza and occupied Palestine. I ask you today to see me, to help disappear me. I am from Palestine. As a Semitic individual, that's right, I am Semitic. It is vital for me to be seen within the community I live in, that I worked in, that I raised my kids in, that I pay my taxes. So we can stand within our world here, our I know it's far, but to uplift and raise the voices of those marginalized and oppressed. Voting yes on a ceasefire resolution amplifies the grassroots movement to stop killing. Killing. We're asking to stop killing. It's pretty simple for me. It holds legislatures accountable and it sets the tone for what we want from all levels, excuse me, of government. Let's join more than a hundred US cities who have passed ceasefire resolutions, including Yushin. We have to acknowledge that there is a power imbalance that has led to over forty-one thousand Palestinian lives lost, many others missing, maimed, or enduring unbearable suffering without access to basic medical care like morphine. Children, babies, families torn apart, all during Ramadan or Easter. They're screaming and crying, missing extremities, some without a single surviving family member. Public health experts say the worst is yet to come. This is also eco-side. So the UN is investigating the environmental impact of Israel's bombardment on Gaza. A hundred thousand tons of human sewage are being dumped into the Mediterranean daily. Carbon emissions were released in the first two months by the military bombardment that equal up to what, twenty countries released in one year, in one year. We recycle, we try not to speed, we use disposable shopping bags. So if not for the children living in the open air concentration camp, then for your kids. Because the environmental implications there will affect us all. A regional war will spread and affect us all. And we cannot, we cannot continue to be just progressive. Progressive except for Palestine. My dear friend is going to read a poem by the Food Generation next. Thank you so much. I give you all my love and respect for listening to me.
Thank you. That's fine.
Hello, guys. I'm your Malak teacher in Hood River, Oregon. I'd like to read a poem by Mahnu Doge. Think of others. As you prepare your breakfast, think of others. Do not forget the pigeon's food. As you conduct your wars, think of others. Do not forget those who seek peace. As you pay your water bill, think of others. Those who are nursed by clouds. As you return home to your home, think of others. Do not forget the people of the camps. As you sleep and count the stars, think of others, those who have nowhere to sleep. As you liberate yourself in metaphor, please think of others, those who have lost the right to speak. As you think of others far away, think of yourself. Say, if only I wrote candle in the dark. Thank you.
I don't have the sheet, but I saw Susan and I saw Hussein get up and sign it. Please.
May I touch this?
You're all set.
Okay. We never know what a mouse will do.
Sign it.
Um, I have
You can give it to Abigail.
Yes, I will, I will. Um, I
They can't hear you online now, I'm sorry. So, okay.
We weren't here last time, and that's for them.
Okay.
I think I have the right people, but I'm not sure.
Sorry. Oh, I see you have their names there. Thank you.
Well, I'm trying.
Okay.
And then I think this is what everybody would have posted on Mark and I'll give it.
We can email it, we can scan it. Income to Pooni Ham, so it's on.
Thank you. So my name is Susan Crowley, 411 12th Street, Hood River. I'm here to speak again on Gaza, and what's being handed out to you is this little item here. I believe in paper. It's with us long after the words are forgotten sometimes. Most of Gaza's homeless now. And for a council who is very concerned about issues relating to the homeless and suffering that that entails, that would be significant. Close to two million people. There have been about a thousand more deaths since we last came and talked to you two weeks ago. And the count is now thirty-four thousand, about three-quarters of whom are children and women. And that would be, if you're into the eye-for-an-eye thing, about thirty-three Gazans eyes for one Israeli eye. There have been lots of developments in the last two weeks, and yes, funding was approved for Israel. However, what that highlighted, highlighted, if anything, was the extent of the split and the growing anguish over what's happening with our tax dollars in our name, with our weapons. Seventy percent of the weapons that Israel imports are from us, from the US. The splits involved fifty-eight House members who did not vote for aid to Israel. And there's been a letter signed in the last week, and our Senator Merkley was among the signatories, and a House letter. That was a Senate letter, a House letter, House of Representatives, that was signed by forty representatives, including Nancy Pelosi, basically saying it's time to consider using our weapons sales to Israel as leverage to help the ceasefire occur. So there's a lot of growing concern. Most of you probably know about the campus protests that are going on now. Columbia University, I was there in nineteen sixty-eight. And frankly, I think that these issues, if anything, are much more profound and much more global in their reach and have much more significant impacts in terms of pulling the rest of the world into really devastating regional conflicts. The New York Times has issued an editorial in the last week, and that's what you have, you'll have in front of you. And basically, they make the same point, which is surprising because it's been a strong supporter of Israel, as has the Wall Street Journal. And the Times is basically taking the same posture. It's time to think about assuring that the weapons we give Israel are used humanely. And we know from the photographs we've seen, from the reports we have, from thirty-four thousand dead, that that is not humane. Destruction of neighborhoods is not humane. Movement toward genocide is not humane. And there's a significant portion, as we know, of the Israeli cabinet that really would like to just push all the Gazans out and allow settlement of Israelis in Gaza. And I think that's an ult- ultimate goal for many. So keep that in mind.
Thank you, Jen.
It's not over. There's still time to join your voice to the voices that are rising now. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And Hussein.
We've had to know. I wanted to bring up something that happened two or three weeks ago with a gentleman that was sitting in a truck. And he was from across the river and he worked for the city, I guess he said. He brought something very interesting, and he thought we are not intelligent, we're just so stupid, we're gonna believe what he said. He said, imagine your neighbor coming to you, shooting you, shooting you, killing you. And the next day he comes back and shooting you and kills you, and then he takes whatever he wants and he does whatever he wants. But what he meant, he forgot to mention is that this happened when Palestine became occupied and people were going into the Palestinian homes and shooting them and kicking them out and taking their homes and their land. So I wanted to respond to him. But I just thought, you know, my God, how can you be so, I don't want to use bad words. Anyway, how can you just come in here and talk about something that the news right now is bringing up the whole reality from three thousand three hundred years ago to today of what's happening to Palestine and the Palestinian. And then some of you voted for the resolution and some of you are still backing out to do it. I don't know how you can go home and sleep and see that twenty-two kids were killed just two days ago, twenty-two. I don't know how you can sleep. I wake up with a knot. You know, when you get a divorce, you have a knot in here. It goes for six months before it heals. You wake up and you sleep and you think about your divorce. I wake up and sleep and say, my God, how can we be so evil to just continue the killing and the destructions? I mean, there's a town called Tol Karam in the West Bank. The West Bank has done nothing. They just went right in. The military, the IDF killed people, damaged their sewage, damaged their road, bombed more homes, killed more kids. And we sit here and we look at each other like life is like, well, you know, I'm eating my piece of cake and drinking my coffee every morning. How can you do this? And Paul, I'm sorry, you're my mayor. I respect you. I've always respected you. We've always had a long relationship as friends. When you sat here and you said no, you said, I asked the people who came to my meeting. And Congress and Council, Rivera said to you, like, how many people, two or three? I went home and I'm like, my God, if my constituent are gonna threaten me by email or calls and tell me you cannot vote yes, you have to vote no, and I go with them, then I shouldn't be sitting here. I shouldn't have people elect me. You are a man of conscience, all of you here, women and men, have conscience and you can use it and do the right thing. And stop, stop this madness going on. And we just gave them seventeen billion dollars, our tax money.
Thank you. Thank you, Hussein. I don't have it in front of me. I wish I did. Maybe someone can pull it up quickly, the statement we passed two weeks ago that I'm very proud of. Also, please come on Saturday at four-thirty. Senator Merkley, who does have this in his remit, will be here in Hood River at West Side School for a town hall. I hope that y'all come and speak to your much higher-up elected representative. Okay, so we now have a presentation, debt one-on-one. Chris?
Thank you. Um, so, uh, so the bond election strategy was identified as a significant project in the council work plan. And in the fiscal twenty twenty-four budget, we allocated resources to engage municipal advisor to achieve, to achieve these outlined objectives. And to, to look at this in a thoughtful approach. The original intent in the, the council initiatives was likely looking at a voter-approved general obligation bond with regards to financing projects. And although this was the original intent, this discussion will also address financing options for critical infrastructure. And this is particularly pertinent in, in the, the current budget process. We'll discuss that in the coming fiscal year. For illustration purposes only, I just wanted to outline what we're looking at with regards to past and future infrastructure projects. So, uh, under the current capital improvement plan that we'll discuss during the budget process, the city is looking at nearly doubling the infrastructure projects in the next five years than it's, than it has spent in the past five years. So how does the city appropriately plan for this? And then what does it mean for the city when discussing bonds, debt financing with regards to infrastructure projects, as well as general obligations? I will not answer any of these. And so we're working with a municipal advisor, David Davidson. So Jonas Berry and Matt Donahue were here. And I'm gonna hand it over to them at this point to talk to you.
Thanks, Chris. Mr. Mayor and Councilors, Councilors getting with you tonight. Again, my name is Jonas Berry. My colleague, Matt Donahue, you'll also be seeing throughout this discussion. So just by the way, quick introduction to David Davidson. We provide public finance services in about thirty states across the country, headquartered in Great Falls, Montana. Our corporate office on the public sector side is in Denver, Colorado. We, Matt and I cover the Oregon area, a little bit of Idaho as well. We're with entities all over the state, small, our, small, large, complex projects, less complex projects, schools, cities, health districts, you name it. We, we work with them. Each of us, Matt and I both have over twenty years of experience as bankers, as advisors to local governments and as public officials in our background as well. As Chris mentioned, we've been engaged as the city's municipal advisor. First step in that is to help the city assess debt capacity. Think about kind of the right considerations, facilitate these discussions amongst yourselves, and then eventually help execute a financing, if that's the path that the city chooses. So this is really kind of a, kind of a one-on-one presentation to give you all some kind of background and start to kind of daylight some questions that you may have. Certainly expect this won't be the final conversation and happy to take questions as we go. So please, please jump in as we go if needed. Uh, so wanted to start a little bit, why do governments issue debt? You can see the reasons there. Primarily, it's to fund priority infrastructure projects and generate the benefits that those projects are intended to produce. In, in short, that's the purpose of debt as a tool. Most cities do utilize debt of some kind, different flavors. We're gonna talk a little bit about that. There are some cities that do operate without debt. Generally, the trade-off is they either have cash, large cash balances to fund those large, major capital projects, or they have a strategy of saving up money over time. You know, typically debt is used for major expenditures, right? We're not typically gonna do this for something that's a small addition, but we're talking, you know, millions of dollars types of projects that have very long useful lives. And so the concept there is intergenerational equity, where you have an asset that's being paid for over multiple years, and the sources contributing to payment are also the users of that asset over multiple years. And so that's another kind of maybe non-financial benefit of, of that. The example I think I, I use a lot is a, a water treatment plant, right? You build that water treatment plant with debt, that debt pay is paid off over twenty or twenty-five years. Every user of that system contributes water rates over that twenty to twenty-five year period to pay off that community benefit asset. Governments issue debt because it's a low cost of borrowing. That's due to a couple of reasons. One is there are borrowing tools that are subsidized by the federal or state government. And the cities utilize some of those in the past. And also traditional, what, what I'll refer to as muni bonds, municipal bonds also have a low-cost borrowing rate, interest rate. Interest rates have come up over the past year or so, but still relatively favorable compared to other options, certainly compared to corporate options. And really, looking back in history, you know, maybe another five years previous to here, very comparable to even where rates were back then, despite the major declines that the interest rate market had for a few years recently. Lastly, it's a really robust and reliable market. It's known. There are state and federal borrowing programs that have existed for a long, a long time. We know how they work. We know what the requirements are. And the municipal bond market has existed for a very long time. I kind of, I sometimes say it's the original public-private partnership. It's private, private investors purchasing bonds that are subsidized in the form of a tax exemption by the federal government to help local governments finance their critical infrastructure needs. Lot of information on this slide. We have a couple, a couple that do have a lot of information. We are not gonna go through every box here, but wanted you to have this as a resource and walk through at a high level what this is showing you. So from left to right, these are kind of categories or flavors or types of debt really organized by security or collateral. And what we mean by that is what's the dedicated source that you would be legally committing to repay the bonds? So on the, on the left, in the darker green, unlimited tax general obligation bonds in Oregon, those are typically just called GEO So on the, on the left, uh, in the darker green, unlimited tax general obligation bonds in Oregon, those are typically just called geo bonds. Um, critical uh differentiating factor there is those uh are paid for from a dedicated. Specific property tax that is only able to be used for that uh for repayment of those bonds. Um, and really those can be done for any purpose, but generally they're used a lot by schools. It's one of the only funding mechanisms that schools have. Um, often used by um for projects that don't have a natural uh revenue stream. Uh, highest uh uh credit rating, we're gonna talk about that in a minute as well. Translates to lowest cost of interest, highest rating, lowest interest cost. Uh, the key here is that uh general obligation bonds, as you know, require voter authorization. And so we'll come back to that uh as well, that that um. Uh, that's sort of the key differentiating factor to get to the geo bonds is is voter approval. Moving to the next uh green category, the lighter green, there's sort of a second flavor of of uh. Of general obligation bonds in Oregon, these are typically called full faith and credit obligations. That's just the terminology, they're. Bonds, uh, just like any other, um, but they don't require voter approval. They require, in this case, city council authorization. And the security or collateral, the the dedicated legal payment is all legally available funds. So typically, that's general fund that really means any. Uh unrestricted fund, um, still very highly rated. Uh, uh, local government general funds are generally pretty robust from a market perspective. Uh, and so that's kind of the next flavor down. Um, doesn't require voter approval, doesn't have a new property tax associated with it, paid for from existing revenues. Moving to the kind of two uh gold or yellow categories, uh, these are broadly referred to as revenue bonds, and we kind of split them out into a couple of different flavors. The first is essential service revenue bonds, and that's typically water, sewer, wastewater. Services that are um essential services to the community, uh, and typically have a dedicated revenue stream attached to them, water rates, sewer rates, et cetera. Um, still very um robust, uh typically robust revenue streams, looked upon favorably by the market. But maybe kind of that next level of me, not not quite as robust as the general fund, um, and have some other conditions sometimes attached to them. Uh, coverage, debt reserves, some additional tests, et cetera. And then there's this sort of other category that um I just wanted to flag that. These have called special revenue bonds, which are much more limited revenue streams. So maybe it's gas tax uh funded, specifically gas tax funded. Uh, or or T L T transient lodging tax funded, in some states, sales tax, uh, renewal typically fits in that in that category. Um, and those are sort of the next level, less robust repayment stream, the next level of um security. All all of these tools are tools that local governments in Oregon use uh in some form or fashion. Um, the last comment I'll make uh here, and then let's talk a little bit about what the city has currently outstanding, is um often. Local governments use a full faith and credit, that that light green category, full faith and credit security. And have payment come from another source. So if you're thinking about maybe urban renewal or essential services. Uh, it's a tool to kind of use the strength of the general fund to get a higher rating, lower cost of interest, but ultimately continue to pay those bonds from that specific revenue stream. And we'll come back to that, I I think, a little bit here today as well. There we go. So again, lots of info here. Wanted you to kind of be able to see it, not gonna go through all the detail, but. Uh, the key information uh that we wanted to share is the city does have uh some debt outstanding. And you have debt uh uh is categorized here for the wastewater system, variety of wastewater projects, water projects, stormwater projects, and some smaller amounts for some other. Projects as well. Um, all of the city's outstanding debt is either that kind of very middle column that says security is either the full faith and credit variety with a pledge. Of uh of the general fund. Or it's secured solely by a dedicated revenue stream. But you'll note, uh, for example, if you look the fourth line down, twenty ten F F and C obligations secured by full faith and credit. Paid for by wastewater revenues. Uh, so that's one point we wanted to make here. Um, secondly, wanted to acknowledge that uh the far right column, variety of lenders that you've already worked with, some federal programs, uh USDA World Development. State of Oregon, um, some city internal funding, uh, and public bonds, uh, out of the out of the bond market, a private. Uh, bank, direct lending, uh, with a private bank and the example of the twenty seventeen with Columbia Bank. So. Uh, really, uh, rather than go through all the details, just wanted to acknowledge this is sort of a snapshot of the city's current debt profile. At the very bottom, you'll see uh twenty nineteen and twenty twenty general obligation bonds. These are no longer outstanding, but the city does have a history of utilizing the unlimited tax, general obligation bonds. Uh, for a variety of fire projects, uh, originally issued in two thousand nine, two uh in twenty ten. Uh, they were later refinanced, refunded in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, um, although I think that might be a typo, now that I look at that, I'm not. Uh, but they were refinanced. Uh, that levy, uh, those bonds had a levy attached to them, uh, and then when those bonds expired in twenty twenty two. That property tax levy also expired, and in the final year, it was around sixty cents, uh, was what, a sixty cents per thousand assessed value was what that, what that levy was. Um, sorry, I wanna go back uh here just for a second and talk about ratings. Um, so. What a bond rating is, uh, typically it's something that's required for going out to the public bond market. So a bank loan isn't gonna require this. The state uh typically wouldn't require this. Um, it's an independent assessment that the rating agencies will do. There's four of them, but the most common are Standard and Poor's and Moody's. Uh, in the municipal space. Um, that rating is an independent assessment by these agencies of the uh credit quality of the bond issuance and technically of the city. Often it's referred to as the issuer rating, uh, really what's the likelihood that you're gonna fail to pay those bonds back? Um, the city does not currently have a rating because the bonds that were rated, those general obligation bonds have matured. So with the maturity of those bonds, the rating expired. Uh, but when those bonds uh existed prior to maturity, the city was rated double A. Um, which is very strong rating, especially for a smaller sized city. Rating categories of triple A is the highest. There's a few subcategories within double A, double A is in the middle, uh, and then A and and B and so on. Uh, so ratings are important to kind of acknowledge for a couple of reasons. One is they ultimately determine, help determine the cost of borrowing that investors will will. Require. Um, and for this conversation at this point in time, it's important because the rating agencies provide good data and benchmarks. Uh, to help us kind of have a proxy for how we might plan, uh, as we're thinking about debt levels and and. Fund balances and those kind of metrics and touch points for the city. As we've been doing our work with with uh Chris and the city. We've been continuing to target that double A category level that if the city were gonna go out and issue debt, that's the category that we would try to aim at. So as we've thought about. Those those um, those metrics and touch points, uh, we're we're utilizing that rating um lens to identify the appropriate levels. So, lastly, I think for me anyway, uh, uh, is the sum of all that at this kind of snapshot point in time is. How much could the city borrow if you chose to? Um, and and so follow with me, we're gonna go maybe a little bit out of order here, but first we wanted to acknowledge that uh unlimited tax geo bonds. Has a statutory limit. The statutory limit is three percent of real market value. Based upon that statutory limit. The maximum legal limit for the city would be around eighty seven million dollars. Now, the reality is the functional limit is what voters will authorize in the form of a property tax. So that's a different question. Uh, for example, a sixty cent levy, what you ended, uh, that with the last uh expired levy. Uh, ended at around sixty cents, a sixty year levy on a twenty year bond, uh, would produce around eleven or twelve million projects. So. Uh, if you were targeting uh that kind of a level, that's the amount of that that a sixty cent levy uh would produce. Uh, general fund, full faith and credit bonds, it's a little different calculation. This is a little more art than science, kind of utilizing those those rating metrics. Uh, but the target we've kind of highlighted is that sixty percent of total revenue. Uh, uh, at the double A uh rating category, uh, that would suggest a debt limit of just under sixteen million dollars. And that translates to about uh one point three million in annual payments. So if you just issued a sixteen million dollar full faith and credit bond. You would need to identify about one point three million dollars to pay that, to pay that off. I'm gonna shift over to the uh right-hand side of the of the page there and talk for a minute about bonds secured by enterprise funds. These would be essential service revenue bonds. As they were referenced on the the prior slide. So we did an individual look at each of these three funds, water fund, wastewater fund, stormwater fund, uh, looking at projected revenues, projected expenses. Other existing debt payment obligations and and did a calculation of how much would annually be available within a comfortable. Um, uh, uh, range, how much could be available to pay new debt service? Uh, and so for the water and wastewater fund, it's around seven hundred thousand available. That would translate to about six million. Uh, for each of those funds to be able to comfortably support under that current um projected assumption. Um, uh, analysis, stormwater fund, it's about one and a half million uh in capacity. So wanted to kind of jump over and flag that because the, um, if if. That were the category of projects that you chose to fund, that would sum to about fourteen million that could be supported by the enterprise funds. That fourteen million fits within the fifteen point eight or around sixteen million that the general fund could support. So. An example of how you could utilize the general fund within the kind of rating convention, but have. A dedicated payment source in the in the form of those essential service revenues to pay the debt service uh on on those bonds. And then the last piece, moving back to the bottom left, uh, is if you were to do that, this kind of hypothetical example. Uh, you you borrow thirteen point seven for the essential service uh uh enterprise funds. You'd still have a couple million under that, under that um capacity analysis to fund other projects with your full faith and credit. Now, again, this is not a recommendation. This is just an example of kind of how that, how that all works. Um, the full faith and credit is a little um, uh, a little malleable. It's not a hardline analysis, but wanted to provide you an example uh of how that might look. That was a lot of information in like a very few minutes. Um, I expect there's probably questions which I'm happy to answer. I don't know, Chris, if you wanna. Yeah, finish the presentation here.
I think just a couple of things before we move past this slide that I just want to point out. Um, one, when we're talking about sort of a sixty cent levy, right? So that's sixty cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. Right? So that eleven million dollar bond sort of equated to a three hundred dollar sort of increase in monthly property taxes, right? So as you think about. Sort of voter approved geo bonds, just to to understand that math a little bit. Um, the other thing I want to note on this is when we're talking about the individual sort of debt capacities of the water fund. The wastewater fund, the stormwater fund, um, those are not malleable, right? So so funds that are debt that is raised. Uh, through the water fund through to available debt service must be used for waterfront projects, right? Um, so when we talk about a thirteen point seven percent, I'm sorry, thirteen point seven million dollar overall sort of finance capacity. Through the enterprise funds, that's that's not for all enterprise projects, right? That's for, you know, the the breakout here is kind of the maximum for individual project. Um, the other thing when we talk about full faith and credit and and sort of other things the city might wanna do with that full faith and credit. I do wanna point out, you know, sort of the urban renewal area. Um, and when we talk about West Side as well, um, because there's a, there's, you know, sort of given what. Is is, you know, it's desired to be done over the west side and the timeframe is desired to be done, that's also gonna require some sort of outside financing, right? Um, and until the tax increment sort of catches up, that's something else that the city may look at from sort of a full faith and credit aspect, right? So, um, I just wanna lay this out because if not, if not now at some point, right, the city's gonna be looking at. Uh, you know, sort of full faith and credit, sort of debt issuances. Um, and again, uh, you know, the reason that we're sort of being sort of thoughtful and and prudent at this point, it it's not the city hasn't done this in the past, it has. Um, it's just it's been some time. And so I wanna point this out as sort of one of the options that's possible. Um, so that's sort of a segue to.
Chris, can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
The Rand Road, like mortgage, was that a full faith and credit?
Yes, so the, so, so Rand Road is a full faith and credit issuance.
So that was like other housing things potential.
Yeah, that's correct. Now, so, uh. This is important because when we're talking about full faith and credit debt and whatnot, it's it's really, the limiting factor in all of these is not necessarily the borrowing. Capacity of any individual sort of fund or entity, right? It's really the the ability to to fund the debt service, right? So we'll talk about this during the budget process, the Rand Road, uh, the Rand Road sort of uh principal and interest payments. Are currently being paid through the C E T sort of, uh, both the developer. Um, incentive as well as the affordable housing incentive, right? So that was the the sort of source that was identified as far as payment. Right? But as far as the credit, it's full faith and credit to the city, right? So, so if those funds were not available, at the end of the day, it's a responsibility of the general fund. Uh, um. Okay, so. Sort of key decision points, next steps, where where are we, right? What's? The the reason for this conversation now is because I want to do it ahead of the the budget process, just so they're maybe sort of thinking about it. Um, as we talked about, you know, Adam and Haley have done a very, very good job and put a lot of work into trying to prioritize. What are the critical infrastructure projects um that the city is 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 looking to do, right? And a lot of these projects are ready to be bid. Um, we've done a lot of the design work uh in this, in the past couple fiscal years. So the thirteen million dollars of identified priority capital projects that we'll talk about in the context of the the uh twenty twenty five fiscal year. Um, are projects for the most part that are ready to be bid and go. Um, now, at thirteen million dollars, that that exceeds the the city's ability to finance that internally, right? So at some point, we're looking at at that sort of external financing, even, you know, even when we, when beyond on sort of grants. And sort of other financing uh that's available for these projects, we're still looking at this budget of about seven million dollars of outside financing to to complete these projects. Um, so, uh. Currently, this has been addressed through internal loans. Um, we will also talk uh before the, before the end of this fiscal year. With regards to the internal loans that are being extended from the fleet fund, um, to the various enterprise funds to complete this fiscal year. Uh, but the the capacity of the of the city to um continue to fund these internally is is diminishing. Right? And so we're gonna need outside financing to complete the projects. Um, one of the important next steps will be to engage uh bond counsel. Um, and we will do this uh in in for this fiscal year with regards to the internal, the internal loans. Uh, what we wanna do is make sure that any financing that's being done by the city right now may potentially be available for reimbursement. Um, should the city go out for uh for for revenue bonds or other type of bond financing. Um, that would also be an important member of whatever financing team is put together with regards to exploring options. Um, I do wanna know, uh, just so that we can have in this discussion. Um, I am not at this point in time saying that bond financing is the, is the the recommendation as far as. This is what this financing strategy sort of should be or is recommended. Um, but I think this will be an important tool. But we'll also talk about things like the Business Oregon one stop. Um, you know, we will talk about things like lines of credit. Um, you know, there are other options that are available, right? But this is, this is a a very important uh sort of aspect of it. Um, and so I wanted to sort of begin that conversation. Um. Anything that is done will require our council authorization, right? So we will have another conversation at some point with strategy. Uh, and recommendations, there will be another conversation of that with regards to any sort of authorizations. Um, so, uh, so this is sort of not the end all. I really just want to have this as an open discussion. Um, so with that, we'll turn over any questions to Jonas.
Go ahead.
Just a real quick one, the thirteen million, that's for next fiscal year or that's for the next five years C I P?
No, so that, so that, so the next five years C I P, I think in our budget, it's forty two million dollars across parks. Uh, sewer, water, wastewater. Um, and so, uh, that's that that thirteen million is what's slated for next year.
Did this analysis answer the questions that you had, Chris?
Mostly.
Tell me more about that.
Uh, I think, uh. Well, so first and foremost, I want to understand that the projects that were in the pipeline. Could be financed. And so from my perspective, understanding what is the revenue that's available at the individual uh enterprise funds and what type of bonds could those support? And is that within the financing needs of the city, right? That was sort of the first threshold question, right? Like sort of, right, is it? Can the city, can the city perform, you know, sort of given this this project pipeline? Um, so you're sort of given that, given the information here on this slide. Right? All of these, sort of, all of these sort of debt limits are within, right, the the sort of the the individual fund needs. Um, we also looked at what it would look like sort of on a rolling basis, right? So every three to four, five years, if these can get refinanced and just sort of that continue. Um, to fund projects in the future. So that was really one threshold question. Um, I think that the thing that's still outstanding for me is, is this the strategy, right? Or in the, in the near term, are we continuing to finance projects individually on sort of piecemeal? Um, you know, individual sort of financing issuances, right? Whether it be uh individual banks, lines of credit. Um, aggregation of sort of D E Q and, you know, everything that comes through Business Oregon. Um, each of them have their own particular issues. Uh, and so it's, so the next step for us um is really to figure out, you know, sort of what's a recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you.
On the other side of this slide, you know, available for net service amounts per each fund, is that a free cash flow?
Yeah.
That's a straight free cash flow.
Yeah.
Are any of the accrued liabilities assumed in this model?
No, so this is cash. So so now I'm going to defer to you on this, but. This is also the definition, I believe, the issuances are using, right? So the idea is is that these are the these are the maximum amounts that the underwriters will underwrite, right? And again, this is debt limits, right? And so we will have our own sort of guidance, right? And and sort of debt policies with regards to how we're judging maximum debt.
How are we going to address crude liabilities that, let's say hypothetically, we max out debt service coverage ratios? Like this one one two covered factor. What has any consideration been given to the accrued liabilities for all these facilities? Beyond this analysis?
Yeah, I mean, I can I can I can just create liabilities at the at the the sort of general fund level, right? Because of sort of pension obligations and things along those lines, but I'm not necessarily sure what would be considered that on enterprise funds.
Yeah, it's a really good, good question. And maybe, so the answer is, I don't know that the analysis specifically accounts for accrued liabilities. And how those might be, for example, amortized in a payment structure over time. What this analysis does is it looks at the revenues that are incoming. And as Chris mentioned, it it may not even be all the revenues that are coming in, right? Because we only want to look at really true operating type revenues. So for example, S D Cs are excluded from this analysis because they're a little bit less certain, right? Yeah, absolutely. They're low up and down and unpredictable. So we have sort of a conservative lens on revenues. Then we also look at a conservative lens on operating expenses. And so I'm simplifying a little bit, but that's really the math to get to available revenues. This is more similar, again, I'm short cutting the discussion, but more similar to how the underwriting underwriting community would look at this. And then that produces that sort of free cash flow, right, that you mentioned, plus a coverage factor of one point two, right? So which is a kind of minimum market market standard. I say all that because it's it is just a point in time analysis, right? So the city can choose as we go forward to to do stress testing. And say, well, what if operating expenses increased by X percent rather than Y percent? What if on the other side of that, I think we're assuming a very modest three percent, I think it's three percent or less. Kind of revenue growth, kind of combination of rate increases, customer growth, et cetera. That's a really conservative level. If there was a decision made to increase rates, that increases. So again, these are all, you know, malleable features that we can continue to look at as we go forward. This is sort of the point in time, maybe most simplified analysis, if that's a good way to think about it. And if there are large, you know, very large liabilities that are coming down the pipeline, I think we'd want to, you know, consider factoring that into that future capacity.
Yeah, one one thing to say, sorry, fifteen fifteen years ago was we have the fleet of police friction vehicles on. Fire apparatus and that's what we need to figure out a way to pay for all that stuff over time. So we created a vehicle replacement fund that over time accrues and accounts for those liabilities and sets money aside. So eventually when we do need a new apparatus, we have the funds there to pay for it. I would not like to see the same sort of thing happen with our waste recovery plan. If we choose to go ahead and invest a massive amount of money, max our debt service, uh, service ratio in order to leverage and get this done. Without at the same time minimizing the long term liabilities that we may have to face should something happen. Because then if we reach that point, then we can't borrow anymore. We're maxed out on leverage and we have no additional source of revenue.
Yeah, no, I I I agree, right? Hundred percent. And I think that, you know, a couple of things that we look at, and that's, and I think that is important, so the the capital improvement plan. Right? And so so the five year capital improvement plan is something that we'll talk about in context of the budget, right? But but Haley and Adam have a like a ten year capital improvement plan, right? So I think that, you know, sort of having that robust sort of, now, obviously, things will change, right? But but having the idea as to sort of what the future does look like, right, does allow us to plan a little bit. The only other thing I will mention is, you know, as far as this is functioning to the actual lot of it, right? So like existing debt service, right, existing sort of obligations, you know, that that all is is factored into these categories.
There's existing debt obligations and liabilities, and then there's off the balance sheet liabilities that we're not accounting for necessarily. We we have assets and they're depreciating, they're going to replace them eventually. We may or may not be accounting for those.
Yeah, well, I I would, again, when we're talking about the enterprise funds, and that's just, it's a, it's a great point, right? But when we're talking about the enterprise funds, we we are talking in large part about those type of replacements. Right? We're talking about the replacements of, you know, sort of antiquated infrastructure and, you know, sort of a need of replacement.
So I just, I had one other point that may be helpful to the discussion. I mean, as you look at the information here, we've only talked about twenty year amortization, twenty year payment schedules. That's not, that's just a number that we put as sort of a touch point. So there are both options to finance over a shorter timeline, which recaptures that future capacity. Also, the existing debt that the city has does begin to expire, which also produces capacity to accommodate those those future projects as well. So I just want to acknowledge there's other kind of conditions and tools at our disposal to make sure that we're helping, you know, manage those future obligations.
And well, for me, the only thing I'll see a couple of different debt service coverage ratio numbers as well, like one point five.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I I will mention, right, because the vehicle replacement fund right now has been the main source of interfund loans.
Yep.
Right? Now, it has a very healthy balance, right? But there's also significant near term needs. And so the loans that have been made out of the out of the. The vehicle replacement fund have been five year fully amortizing loans, right? And so they have pretty heavy debt service associated with them, right? Particularly because of the principal repayment. So so while that's nice, because it's sort of city funds, right? On twenty, twenty five, thirty year sort of, you know, assets, it's it's not appropriate, right? And it's 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 unnecessarily burdening the the enterprise funds with sort of heavy debt repayment obligations, right? When there are sort of, when there are cheaper options, right? Now, again, everything's a trade off, right? But, you know, I mean, but the 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 it it. It's not a long term fix to to fund these projects with enterprise fund or with the internal fund funds.
Thank you, and thank you for being here today. What were to happen if we have, which we do, we have constituents whom. An additional three hundred dollars would be financially devastating. So I noticed that earlier on in the slides, you had examples of other sort of municipalities that you consulted with. Are there examples of similar bond projects in diverse communities that were implemented to ensure equitable outcomes? And being able to pay into this is is a question that I have, like what process or what are we thinking about those individuals that do live within the city limits?
So so I want to, I want to, one, make a quick distinction, and then I want to address your question in another manner as well. Because so the general obligation bonds that are sort of voter authorized are generally usually tied with a project, right? And ultimately, ultimately, it's the it's the residents and the voters who decide whether or not that moves forward or not, right? So so to.
I agree, and we know that. Those, we know that not everybody votes, right? Not everyone feels like they have that opportunity, not everyone is aware, and so I just want to keep that peace in mind.
So so I. Not to completely absolve myself of any responsibility, but, you know, but ultimately, I do see that as as sort of the. The the council and governance responsibility as far as what what is council comfortable putting on a ballot, right? And this, you know, and sort of, so so that decision kind of a hundred percent rests with, right, with with governance. Now, the other part I want to mention is when we're talking about enterprise fund debt, these are tied to, these are tied to the revenue. That the these individual funds are getting, right? And so this is the water rates, this is the, you know, sort of the stormwater charges. Now, that is something that that we address every year in the fee schedule, right? And and actually, we will address that again in budget because we're talking about potentially doing a sort of a rate study. But but that's something that, you know, sort of ultimately sort of is not necessarily voter sort of authorized, right? But doesn't the community. And so, you know, it's important to note that when we're looking at sort of these debt limits. We're looking at them within a range of, you know, we said sort of three percent increases, just sort of like right now below inflation increases in these utility charges. When we start talking about potential capacity that goes beyond what that existing revenue can can support. And we're talking about sort of greater than inflation, you know, adjustments to 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 the uh, the water rates, right? Or utility charges, that's really where that 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 conversation you brought up is going to be.
If if I made to maybe helpful context, and maybe I'll start with. I was gonna say good news, maybe it's neutral news, and then I can maybe give you the the bad news part. But I want to be clear that when we talk about that three hundred dollars, that's calculated based upon a median home value of four fifty. So we know that's not, you know, obviously what but everyone's going to pay. It's a tax on property owners. So other folks that aren't property owners may pay that indirectly, of course. But I'm just want to be clear that that three hundred is not, you know, it's not a sort of fixed cost on on every resident. The the bad news maybe is I don't know that there's, I'm not aware of sort of the legal mechanism to modify that. So that's the question that ultimately comes to council and to voters is is that levy rate uh, impact. Uh, that would that would be asked for approval. Last thing I'll say is that there are, if the city chooses to go down the path of of general obligation bonds. We're really the finance focus. There are other sort of experts who prioritize that community conversation. And and so if that was a path that the city chose, that would probably be advisable is to bring in one of those folks who really can help facilitate that that conversation.
I see that Counselors Van Miller, I see that Counselor Van Miller has raised his hand.
Yeah, um, think you guys can hear me okay? Yeah, um, Chris, the thirteen million for twenty twenty five, uh, that doesn't assume a G O bond, that that's my assumption. Okay, um, is the C I P, you know, tenish years ago, we did a big C I P. Update and then a rate structure plan to pay for that. It it seems like we're sort of in a hybrid situation now where you guys are looking at. Uh, C I P priorities that are sort of off off piece, is that is that true?
Uh, you know, unfortunately, I don't have the the full background on that. You know, I mean, I I can tell you that one of the, so one of the reasons that we that uh, that we would like to look at a rate study. And we'll discuss it in the context of the current budget, is because the project pipeline has changed, one. And two, the past rate study that the city's been working off of assumed a very, very different interest rate environment.
Right.
And so our increases based on the existing rate study have really put the city slightly behind. You know, sort of what that original plan was.
Well, and and I guess that's my point is that, you know, reality ends up being fluid compared to what you thought ten years ago, right? And but but at some point, we need to say, okay, what, you know, there's, there's. In that first chart, there was, you know, fifty million of capital improvements needed. What is our long term rate? Strategy within these enterprise funds to 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 make that happen? And it it seems like you need both parts of that discussion. So I I don't know at what point we want to take that on. It's a big, it's a big project. So is is that a goal setting discussion or is that a budget discussion?
So so in in the budget, we will discuss, you know, we'll discuss a rate study, a utility rate study for this, you know, this fiscal year. And so I think that's where the conversation begins. I know I talked to Will as well. I mean, Will can, Will is is. Walking me through sort of a, you know, sort of back of the envelope calculation to understand sort of where we are. So there is, there is information available to us immediately to understand sort of where we generally are. But ultimately, it's it's, you know, we'll need to rely on a rate study.
Got it. Besides all that reality stuff getting in the way, this. This uh, look at what do we have toolbox wise for paying for big capital stuff is is pretty valuable. I had never heard of the, you know, sixty percent rule, you know, to sort of set some boundaries of what what we could borrow. You know, what 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 money is available to do bigish things? And and what's the trigger point for a G O bond for, you know, really range stuff, so.
I I was gonna say like that's that, that was one of our takeaways as well, right? I think that the, you know, our. Our ultimate takeaway was it's not necessarily debt capacity in any in any one of these single scenarios. It's really more what, you know, what can, what what does the city have available for debt service?
Yep.
What I want is an aggressive O meter. It says, Mayor, here's where y'all are now in terms of how much risk you're tolerating with money you're borrowing. And if we were to take so and so recommendations, that would put us, you know, ahead of the pack, in the pack. Nobody wants to lay too fewer pipes, too few sewer pipes, and nobody wants to be on the front page because city over leveraged. So I'm starting to. Understand that that's the question I want, and maybe in a little while I'll understand what the answer might be, but that that's what's going on in my.
I feel like my job is to keep you away from the aggressive meter.
Yeah.
So, well, you know, ultimately, we are trying to look at this from a very conservative standpoint, right? And so I think we're, and I and I, I think we're trying to do it holistically, holistically from starting with public works, right? Which is sort of, right? I mean, we've had the conversations as far as there are nice to do projects that are priorities, right? And and we really need to identify what are the priorities. And I think, you know, Haley and Adam and his group have done a very, very good job of really whittling down to, you know, these are critical priorities, right? So it's so once we sort of get past the sort of, you know, or get to the must haves. Then the question is sort of what can we conservably finance, right? Now, that does open up the idea that, you know, if we now want to include some of the nice tabs, right? Or that speed up that, you know, what does that mean fiscally for the city? Absolutely.
Chris, how and what, how much of this conversation with these fine consultants have we accomplished tonight? Like, are we in, have we spent half the time we're going to spend with them?
How much do you like this? I know, it's a great question. I mean, I think it it, this might not be a satisfying answer, Mr. Mayor, but I think it really reverts back to, you know. Where, what projects does the city prioritize for for funding, you know, now or soon versus being comfortable with later? And the second is, what's the city's comfort level with that aggressive meter, right? How much confidence do you have to say, you know what, current currently very modest debt load, very low debt load? Targeting a double A rating category, which is still a very strong level. So how comfortable are with you saying, yeah, let's go, we need these projects and these are the priorities? Versus, no, we want to have some additional conversation, at least from from my perspective. And and so really, I think it's up to to you and staff to determine how much you need us to help guide that along.
Well, there's two timeframes we're dealing with, right? So there's the there's the context of the budget discussion, you know, I mean, one thing we have not mentioned. You know, sort of from from the decision to go to sort of financing, right, to money in hand. With regards to the bond process is probably ninety days. And, you know, we do have a project pipeline, right, that that Public Works is very anxious to get started on, right? So there is, there is a shorter term timing consideration that is sort of separate and apart from longer term planning. Right? And so as far as the work that that, you know, sort of, so so Jonas and Matt and I are meeting this week. To sort of go through, now that the, now that the budget work has been sort of draft, budget work is going to prepare, go through what this year looks like, right? Projects, timing, when's what, you know, when does the city need money and and how much, right? To to perform this, these projects, that's sort of part one, that's the part we're not finished with yet, right? If there is a decision that, you know, sort of a bond financing strategy is is part of that solution. Then that's an entirely different sort of, you know, that's an entirely different sort of project, right?
I also just want to make sure that we're keeping in mind, while I appreciate you all talking to us about the tools that we have in our toolkit. That we're also keeping in mind communication measures and templates. If we are going to pass a bond, do our constituents truly understand? Is this a transparent process with them where they're involved and they feel like they have decision making or at least the ability to. Express some of their sentiment and then also making sure that we're including non English speaking persons as well.
Um, I don't know if this is to Adam or Abigail or Chris or all of the above, but I guess in in all of this. I think maybe it's especially if we're doing another, you know, five year rate study. Fully acknowledging, obviously, water, wastewater, storm, critical infrastructure that is, you know, obviously a main reason why we're here. But I I am wondering, you know, if we've got a five or ten year C I P from staff. Where, how does council review that? And and I think, you know, kind of the other end of the aggressive meter of. Are we replacing things that are like, oh, they're going to break tomorrow if we don't fix them? Or are we, you know, doing finding that right balance, or are we actually going above and beyond and like, we're going to have the gold plated? Thanks, and I'm aware Adam's not going to give us that, but but I think there's something in there that like. Obviously, the operations and management and and. Obviously, the operations and management and and and, you know, implementation of these projects are very much not council's role, but like.
Yeah.
Some decision or some knowledge and conversation about like. Where are we in that replacement process, or? Is this the right amount of projects or, you know, for from our end to balance the community needs and the community cost of living with the, obviously, the needs for service?
Hmm.
Like, where, how does that fit in to all of this?
Um, I mean, I don't want to speak for Adam and his team, but I think that, you know, part of that, part of that discussion really happens in the next couple of weeks. With the with the going through the the budget, right, so the budget has as part of it. Uh, the five-year CIP plan, right, outlined by projects, by fund, um, and then also there's the, there's the sort of project sheets. Uh, that that are part of that, right, so, um, you know, the. So however, however council wants to direct that conversation, right, to understanding project priorities, why are things slated for this year? Um, you know, sort of how how a project's been slated for sort of thirty years, that's the, that's really part of the budget conversation.
Okay, I guess. You know, we've had that in the budget for the last few years, and we've never really had a conversation within that about the five-year CIP, or. I've never been reading those project sheets yet, tells me like, oh, we're replacing pipes on the street for this many feet, but. It doesn't give me that good concept of like, what, how aggressive or not aggressive are we in our. Replacement maintenance schedule, and so I don't know where it, if that if that's part of the budget or separate, but I guess I'd like some more than what we've been doing.
That sounds great, I think, um, you're right, when you receive those project sheets, they have like a description, but I don't know that they have like an urgency meter of like what's most critical. Um, however, Public Works does review the CIP every year, and sometimes you see things that, um, either an opportunity or. Uh, an issue is up there and that brings one issue, one uh, project up higher on the list and moves something else down, so. An example this year was Man Park was a couple of years out, but we had the opportunity of partnering with the Lions, right, so that moved that one up. Um, I think some of the others, I feel like we've got a pretty good handle on what those things are going to be like, we have our INI study, that has really helped, um. Reorder some items in the CIP because that gave us a sense of urgency of which pipes need to be replaced due to um. Infiltration issues or other pieces, um, but I I'm making eye contact with Adam here, I know Haley is on. And and we can review this about how to best bring kind of that project level, and I think what I'm hearing is that like. Uh, just like we use with your um, your council work plan, we have critical, right, significant and other, perhaps. Maybe applying that same kind of criteria, but these are truly critical for these reasons, these are things we're monitoring, here are things that need to happen, and just know that. Um, you know, things can happen to move that around, but that's our best guess at time with the budget meeting.
I think, yeah, something like that might just help frame it for me and and give us context.
Adam, does that sound like something to start from, we can talk more about it, but I don't want to speak with the, speak for you.
Haley, are you, are you on? Because. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak for you, I want you to correct me if I'm going too far, but I think, uh, you know, as part of this process, when we're looking at the CIP. Um, Haley actually did that that very thing, right, which was trying to trying to identify sort of critical. Um, you know, critical sort of pipeline projects and then sort of gauging the next levels, Haley, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that at all.
Sure, so with that, I have put in kind of tiers of priority projects based off of our INI list and other items like that. So we do have some of those. Information like Abigail mentioned, it does change frequently, we do meet, we actually meet multiple times a year as a Public Works Department. To go over all of those priorities, and we do have a list that actually goes out to twenty thirty-five, I believe. It with all of those projects. And with that, there's a lot of. Consideration into the issue areas, which also includes INI, fire flows, capacity, items like that. Does that answer, Christian?
So I think, I think what I'm hearing is is that we should, that that part of the budget meetings, we should sort of bring some visibility to that process.
One second, Grant, uh, some part of me is worried that we've been keeping the wheels on the bus and the pipes haven't. All rotted out and none of them are gold-plated, and now in order to keep up with basic functionality, we're going to have to go to maximum indebtedness. Help me not feel that.
I don't think that's the case, right, I think that that was, honestly, I was, I was going the other way, where my concern was. Does, you know, sort of, was the project list even financed, right? Uh, and so I'm, I'm comfortable, uh, both with regards to the work that Haley has done prioritizing projects, creating a, you know, sort of a a pipeline. Um, and then us looking at the financing, right, not just for immediate, but what does sort of like rolling financing capacity look like? Um, and at no point do I feel like the city is sort of max indebtedness, right, or, you know, has to take s- significant measures. Um, you know, in order to sort of address what we're addressing.
Great, thank you, granted.
Oh. Going through this process three times, uh, one thing that I've found has been helpful for one of our core positions is having a breakdown, breakout or matrix of. Different conditions, uh, for example, credit ratings, um, free cash flow numbers, ratio, debt coverage ratios, that sort of thing. And saying, if we need these numbers or if we want to keep this rating, uh, based on these variables, this is what we should expect. Have a a couple of curves or matrix on how much debt costs given particular levels or uh, that sort of thing. Uh, would that be something that you guys could prepare for us?
Uh, yeah, absolutely, in fact, we've started uh, laying the groundwork for some of those, just getting to this point and settling on that kind of double A uh, target, so, um. Yeah, that's certainly something we can pull together.
That's how it might give us a better understanding on the aggressive meter where we are.
Yeah, yeah, and I would say, I mean, again, this is, this is um, a pretty low temperature on the aggressive meter, right? When we're saying maximum capacity, we're talking maximum capacity with very conservative assumptions and a double A. Rating target, most cities the size of Hood River are not in the double A category, they're in the A category, so. I just want to be clear about that, that that this is a pretty low volume on the aggressive meter when we talk about capacity. Cause we're talking about capacity with that very conservative, safe uh, convention built in.
I knew I should have patented that before I spoke. How much more discussion in this meeting on this topic should we take, Chris?
I, you know, I mean, this is really, to answer whatever questions you may have, right, I think that, you know, uh, it's important to understand. That, um, your timing is a consideration, right, we will be working towards a financing strategy. Uh, we will be coming back to to council with some recommendation for some debt strategy, right? And so, um, whether that is bonds, whether it's, whether it's some other sort of hybrid, um, whether it's, you know, exclusive or bonds. Um, but I just, I just want everyone to be very comfortable that, you know, that we will be coming back with it with a recommendation. That the city look at, you know, sort of debt in amounts that that has not looked at in a couple of years.
I haven't heard the word compression yet tonight. Are we lucky or smart or structurally savvy?
In what context?
Like, like, none of these max up, must that we were presented to say, except for compression.
Mayor, are you referring to property tax compression?
Yeah.
I don't think bonds are actually affected by property tax, I think that's levy and permanent rate.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Uh, Gladys and then Megan.
Uh, this would be my first bond. Going through this process, is it possible that you can just share the slides that you watch had on screen today's process?
Absolutely.
Um. So obviously, you know, short timeframe for this coming fiscal year, top priority is, you know, the the CIP for critical infrastructure. Um, I guess where, how in in this, you know, the work you guys are doing, do we as a council? Talk about if we want to add any of the, you know, the quote-unquote fund projects? Or if, you know, the realities of our CIP for critical stuff. Means that's off the table for the next five to ten years, like. Where does that fit into this potential strategy discussion from you guys?
Well, I I think that, um. If we're talking about sort of projects that would fit within the enterprise funds, right, so if we're talking about.
Putting that aside.
Right, so so that's, so if we're talking about, you know, potential housing initiatives, right, or, you know, anything along those lines, um. The the, and we'll cover more of this during the budget, right, there isn't really free cash flow at the general fund level that can be put towards debt service. Um, it's, it is, it is, it's funding operations, right, so, uh, if there is a significant initiative that council wants to pers- pursue. Um, that the most likely venue would be a voter-approved general obligation bond. And so, so that's sort of, that's, that's kind of the other thing that was that was learned in this process, is that there really isn't, you know, for a for. Housing initiatives or, you know, sort of other projects the council wants to approve, that the 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 primary venue for that is going to be voter-approved general obligation bonds.
Thank you.
And so, so, so Megan, if if we just identify things like that, um, you know, sort of during budget process. Um, then absolutely we can discuss, you know, sort of, uh, in depth, right, timing, um, you know, sort of numbers, like what does, what does that, what does that look like?
Mark, that's his hand up.
Yeah, and I think this is just. What Megan said, which is, the budget process is the the next budget year, right, with a little bit of a look forward, it's really the. It's really the council-set goals that, you know, we'll be going over in December, that sets. You know, what are the big things that we want to be able to look at, and and to me, it's. How do we keep some powder dry to fund those things, right? And 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 maybe within enterprise funds, you know, we're not daydreaming about some thing at the waste treatment plant, so it sort of takes care of itself, but. But, um. Being able to understand, you know, whether it's a GO bond or or something within the general fund, you know, how do we do land acquisition? How do we do some of these other things, and and these are just. Maybes that that would come out during the prioritization and goal-setting stuff. Um, so I I I guess, to me, Chris, it's sort of like. Asking that you guys have a sense of how much powder we're keeping dry to. Versus how how hard can we push the gas for public works projects, which are all, I'm I'm supportive of all those, um, uh, but. There there's some, there's some policy play that I that I don't really hear, you know, and and maybe I I heard, sort of heard that that's what Megan was mentioning too, which is. You know, how do, how do we know what we have to play with?
Understood.
I think we're getting to the end of this topic for tonight. Yeah, everybody okay? I mean, I I don't have a recommendation, but it seems like we, we went a long way from zero.
Okay, very good.
Okay? Moving on.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys, thanks so much for your expertise, and uh, it's amazing to watch you talk about that stuff, you clearly understand what you're talking about.
Mayor, could I ask a favor?
Yes.
Could we uh, reorganize the agenda just a bit to cover the Powerdale Corridor conversation? Our county administrator has been waiting very patiently, um, and I hope I'm not telling a secret, but.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, you all have before you, um, just a short memo about the Powerdale Corridor, as you know, the Board of County Commissioners have been. Uh, looking at that property, uh, and they have indicated a desire to uh, declare that a public park so that they can have set hours and rules of use for that property. Because some of it lies in the city, uh, you are re- are needed to uh, approve and consent to the designation of. That area as a county-owned public park, so city has no obligation to maintain it, it does not go on the city's inventory of public parks. Um, it's just a a piece for you to allow the county to do so. So, uh, County Administrator Alice Williams is here to answer any questions, otherwise you have a resolution and a motion before you.
Thank you, Abigail, thank you, Allison, continue. Um, one question I have is, I know that we have some uh, strict. Uh, guardrails about parks because of a citizen initiative that was passed, is there anything we should worry about with that?
I I'm looking to our city attorney for uh, guidance, but I do not think that the charter amendment affects a property like this because it's not owned by the city. So it's similar to the port or, um, other properties that are are not ours.
I see, so it's within the city limits, but it's not owned by the city, Allison is nodding, good.
Yeah.
Right, the charter amendment focuses specifically on city parks.
So we're giving them permission to do some park business inside our boundaries?
Correct, but the the county would retain it as a park, and we would not add it to our park inventory for purposes of comp plan or other uses.
Yep. Questions, Megan?
I guess, uh, for both of you, like, are there any risks, why would a city not consent to someone else doing parking in their city, or?
What? Can't understand.
So if we have to consent and approve, is the, what, what reason would a city have for not doing so, is there any risk or long-term complication?
This is a weird requirement of uh, state law. That with, if these, if the park is within the boundaries of a city, they just have to ask your consent with really no standards, no. I don't see any downside to it, but, um.
I would, I would add, the one risk, if you wish to term it that, is uh, it adds another player to the parks. Portfolio, you know, we've had conversations before about the number of uh, agencies that provide park services in our community, we have the Parks Department, we have us. We have the port, we have the school district has some property, um, the library has a park, uh, you now add the county to the list of people who provide parks in the county, in the city.
I mean, they were already part of the.
They've been part of the conversation for a while, so.
But is it Ruth's Park?
It's not in the city.
Thank you. Okay, first county park in the city, make T-shirts.
That's, yeah, and at some point, I believe the county will be in conversation with uh, either ODOT or. Uh, the State Parks Department to handle Ruth's, when it becomes the trailhead for uh, that part of the historic.
Oh.
Anything else?
I'm ready to make.
Oh, then it's.
I also, I also.
Oh, sorry, that's.
Okay.
Thank you, so in the packet, I saw that it says day-use facility designation, no overnight use, so can you help me understand how this will be operationalized? Will you require permits um, for individual homes?
So consistent with the county's rules for the operation of parks, day use is specifically an hour, you know, uh, it it sets hours. And so that gives then uh, our enforcement, the the regulation behind which they can. Clear it out at night and ensure that it's free of debris, consistent with the conservation easement that is in place for that area.
My next question was, let's say it's. I I understand what, how our officers respond and how they collaborate with local organizations, but when you encounter someone that is houseless that's living down there, what's the process that that the county would follow?
We follow the same process, yes, we work uh, in great collaboration and in fact, met with your folks prior to. Uh, putting all of these steps into place, and yes, our sheriff's office operates in the same manner.
You ready?
Go.
Okay, thank you, awesome, um, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero five. Approving and consenting to Hood River County's designation of the Powerdale project lands as part of the county's park inventory.
Move by Saunders. Second. Second by the Pino. Deliberation discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mark online says aye, opposed. Sheriff outside motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, I think the county will be taking this up at their May meeting.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Debt one oh one, you ready for debt one oh two now, Alice? Okay, that brings us to art murals. If I'm not mistaken, Jackie.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors, um, yeah, so before you, you have a ordinance. Um, twenty eighty-one, which is adding chapter eighteen oh three, original art murals under the title eighteen signs and related regulations. Um, since I came last time, there have been a few changes that I want to highlight, um, to the language in there. Um, one of those is that we expanded, um, the following restrictions, which were previously only under the historic. Um, district to murals throughout the city, um, to expand the prohibitions on, um, not, or having it not obscure windows or doors. Um, and that there are no moving parts, lighting or uh, reflective material. Some additional changes were reducing the amount that it's protruding from the wall from six down to two, although that may be under discussion again today. Um, and, um, some of, and uh, expanding the residential restrictions from, um, simply residential buildings to, um. Everywhere within R one, R two and R three zones. Um, and I believe that those covered the changes that were made, um, in this, and so. With that, um, I'll hand. And so with that, um, I'll hand it over to you if you have any further questions or topics that you want to discuss regarding. Okay. Oh, and I do want to highlight, um, thank you, as was pointed out to me briefly before this meeting, um, that under uh, the ordinance twenty eighty-one, we are missing, I believe it's the fourth whereas, is missing a few dates. Um, and so I do have those dates here available that would be added to this. I can review them with you if you'd like, or um, yeah, but the, they were in um, August fifteenth of twenty twenty-three, August twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-three, November eighth um, of last year, and then February twelfth and March twentieth of this year will be added to that.
So this was a uncommon phrase for me. Last time this came, I said, chair votes nay, motion passes, which isn't usually how that goes. So I want this discussion to come to a, to come to a, uh, not a resolution, but a, a, to come to a, a day new mold that is, has a majority approved. So uh, let's kick it off, Megan.
As the person who have the whole long list, um, just a couple small things. And one thing, keep Jackie and everyone on staff for constantly doing with it. Um, as I was reading the packet, in the minutes from the previous time we talked about this, it had said that we um, council had agreed to one inch protruding from the wall versus the two that's now in the code. Um, I don't know that I particularly care, but I was like, well, there is a discrepancy in this one packet. Um, so I figured I'd bring it back up. I don't know what folks' thoughts are between those two. Um.
I'm going to suggest we, at this point, start keeping on this, the things we have to decide. So first thing on the list we're going to decide is one or two inches, is that right?
From my end, yes.
Great. Okay, that's a, that's a, that's a think about it. This time. It's a, that's a think about it. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, and then the other one is way back when this was first talked about in the fall. Um, my recollection was, you know, the council had talked about, oh, buildings and retaining walls. Um, but the code as presented is buildings and structures, which is obviously um, wider than just retaining walls. Um, my preference would be to go back to retaining walls, but I, obviously that's a discussion for council.
Whether retaining walls are eligible to be painted on, is that?
Oh, I think no matter what, that was something council agreed to. It's whether other structures that aren't retaining walls are eligible.
Okay, got it.
Um.
Okay, great.
And then, so those are the ones that I think are actual discussion points. Then there was just one, I talked to uh, Abigail, we had a meeting this morning uh, on page ten of the packet, and it was just weird phrasing of uh, under prohibited murals, we, it said the lineup says murals on historic landmarks are designated contributing structures within historic districts are prohibited. Um, and I was reading that as, oh, only you can paint on a landmark that's not in a historic district. Um, and it's just, I think it's just so like, it needs some distinguishing thing, because later in the code, it is very clear that it, it means landmarks and also contributing structures in historic districts, but it was just awkward phrasing. Um, so I just asked Abigail to maybe come up with a way to make it clear. But I think that's just clarifying something we've already all been on board for.
Thank you. Good. So I got uh, those two points. Plus the, the phrasing, landmark and historic, got it? Uh, I, I, as you did, received the input from uh, Commissioner Babbitts, Landmarks Review Board Member Babbitts. Um, I also have spent some time touring other countries and cities and counties and states, and we have acute downtown. I sure would hate to wake up and find something being orange. So I again am, I think, at odds with the majority decision to be so permissive in our, in our historic downtown.
Can you help me understand why? So I, is it that you don't feel we have a good enough process set in place? Or it's just that you don't want to see that change?
Any building owner gets to choose, and so Pietros could, I think the example I used last time, Pietros could paint a Gumby. And uh, you know, it's a big wall, and the Elks could paint a, I mean, there's hate speech things, so it's not going to be a Confederate flag, which is the ultimate go-to, but something that's like, oh my God, you wake up one morning and there's something like terrible. I, I walk through the Dows a lot and don't love all their murals, and I think I'm kind of glad I don't have all those murals in my town. Like, we could have one of those murals in our town, sorry, the Dell.
Thank you. I hear that. And, and my understanding though, Abigail, Jackie, is that there would be an application process, and it is through there that it would be either approved or denied.
No, this uh, comes back to city council cannot, can only regulate time, place, and manner. So if we don't like the content of a mural, we're unable to um, regulate that. We can only uh, do, you know, where it is, how long it is, what materials are used, what it covers. Um, but the content of the mural cannot be regulated by city council.
There is, um, there are requirements in here about neighborhood contact and presenting what the mural will, the content of the mural itself. Um, however, it doesn't say that, you know, if they receive a lot of negative comment that they have to change that. However, um, there would be some type of public process to review the mural.
Doug? Yeah, thanks. Uh, one of the other things conceptually that was discussed in Commissioner Babbitts, Landmarks Board Member Babbitts's email, um, was the notion that ordinances should, especially with, given the history of this council, uh, four three is a bad look. Um, I understand that's the rule of law, majority, more majority rule. Um, I was curious to poll the council on their perception of that. Is four, four three to you feel horrible for an ordinance? Uh, what was your reaction to that? If anybody has anything to say out.
This is the democratic process? That, that's probably better.
Okay, thanks.
You know, I just think about, and I've said this before, just change and the resistance to change. And this is one that I've gone back and forth on a lot, because, you know, I love Hood River. It's beautiful. We have people that come visit, you know, all over and love this cute little town, but that doesn't mean that we can't change things. And we have Jackie and staff have worked really hard to bring this back and back, you know, and, and we continue to make edits, and they go back and they change it. And uh, I think what is set in front of us with, you know, the couple edits, councillor Saunders, I think we have uh, really good code, you know, it's best a code we have, right? And that I don't want to be afraid of just letting people that they have good intentions, right? And that they're going to paint something that's beautiful on the wall for two years to look at. Um. And then I, you know, that we have to trust that it's going to be okay. Is there some level of risk? Of course there is. And that's the piece that I go back and forth on. In my, you know, if I wake up and there's a big Confederate flag, like, oh, shoot. That was definitely not the intention of that code.
Mark's hand up.
Yeah, and to Doug, to your point, it, it, it feels to me like a, a family debating what color to paint their living room. And, and so I'm, I, I don't have, I don't have worries about the four or three in this instance. So, um, I, I was initially a nervous Nellie about first, first amendment stuff. And, and in my travels, and I just completed a seven thousand mile through oodles of small towns, most of them with little murals, I, I am comfortable with it. I, I, I think that it, it, it adds uh, a creative edge to things. And, and sure, sure, we have to trust the community a little bit, but um, I think it's a positive thing. So I, I still support the thing. Um, on Megan's thing, uh, I, I guess I didn't differentiate between structures and, and and uh, retaining walls. I, I do think retaining walls are a good thing, given our topography to be able to mural. Um, so as long as it supports that, I, I don't mind a thing. And then I don't really see the difference between one inch and two inch. And as, as a budding artist, I would like to have the extra leeway of doing something neat with, with an extra inch of depth. Um, so the, those are my inputs on those.
I feel compelled to quote the like, topic of the philosophy class way, way back, which was the conservatives are scared that something new is going to mess up the delicate balance that has so far kept us out of the tar pit. The progressives provide the opportunity for a new solution that we've never found before. So both of those perspectives have value and, and risk. Doug?
I, I will say throughout this process, and this is a bit of an aside, but you know, I, I've definitely spoken quite, quite extensively on the topic, um, reviewed landmarks, et cetera. It, it just, it occurs to me that maybe um, you know, regardless of this decision, that landmarks feels a bit overlooked in, in cases. Uh, I would suggest that we find some way to have them come here, speak. Um, present, you know, a little bit more uh, on, you know, their perspectives and how things um, they or may not be within their purview, you know, like, for example, you know, uh, Commissioner Babbitts and I talked about the garbage cans, you know, it's easy to, to not necessarily consult landmarks. Why, why should we, should, should or should not consult landmarks? And just a little bit of education, because I feel like all the discussions that I've had, you know, either here or with councillors, um, constituents, everybody is very much interested in preserving landmarks and the integrity of the landmarks board. And I don't want this decision to cloud that. So whatever we can do to ensure that we have a good partnership and, you know, reaching out to that committee and, you know, for that matter, all of our committees. Um, I'm not sure of the avenues for that, but I, I think that they've, they felt a bit um, like we've, like we've superseded them in some sort of way, which I don't think is our intention.
Uh, would you imagine them coming to give their input before we vote?
No, I think their input on this is clear. Um, but I don't want them to feel like a rubber stamp, uh, necessarily. It, it's, I'm, I'm not sure how to better articulate it from here and now, but I know from our discussions that we do value them, and we may differ in this particular opinion, but um, don't want that to be overlooked. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you might also, before you conclude this, check to see if there's any public testimony on this item tonight.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone attending on Zoom who would like to speak to us or, or in the, in the room? Thank you, Dan, for the reminder. It appears that there is none.
Uh, can I provide a little bit of feedback, um, or comments? Um, so in, in regards to the landmarks review board, I know that a few members have been really vocal in their opposition to murals in the downtown historic district. Um, and we understand the reasons why. Um, I do just want to remind you that the recommendation kind of came with a Plan A and a Plan B. Um, and the Plan B was not on, on um, Oak Street, um, and not on historic buildings, and we are following that advice. And we actually extended that advice a bit with that buffer as well. So while we're not following their kind of first choice, I, I do want to reiterate that we have listened to some of their advice and input um, for that. And then I also just wanted to touch on the one inch or two inches. Um, I, for my notes, um, from the meeting, I was kind of under the impression that we were throwing out some numbers, but that I wasn't, I wasn't aware that we had settled on a number of inches. And so I was doing some research on how wide tile, or how much room tiles can take up. Um, and this does give a little, little bit of leeway, um, more than I would say the average tile is. But um, just for some, you know, artistic, uh, you know, needs, or maybe the way the wall is set up, they need a little bit of extra like mortar or something to put it on there with. So that's where the two inches came from, um, with a little bit of research into tile width. Um, so, yes.
Thank you.
Um, I, one, obviously, thank you, Jackie. Yes, it was the Plan B, but I do, I, it is, it was the unanimous Plan A was their preferred thing. And so I think that is, would have been where the rub really is. And I, so I do want to acknowledge that, like, they had a, it wasn't a split decision from their end. They did have a clear um, desire of what was going to best protect our historic district. Um, and yeah, with the, with the one or two inch, I mean, the six inches I didn't like, I, that was a strong thing, but I'm not sure I really, I don't know that really matters, the one or two, but I did, it was just a discrepancy, like, as I was reading the packet, to be like, well, those don't match. So, you know. I like things.
Great. So I'm feeling like, I'd like to now discuss about the eligible surfaces and sheds and retaining walls and outbuildings, and the one or two inches. So let's, can we, then can we come to agreement? Is, is, is everybody okay with, if it says two inches? Yeah, so that's okay. Got it? And the eligible surfaces and structures, what, what, what you want to make an? Can you make a proposal and see if it flies, Megan?
Um, I, yeah, I guess I propose that we kind of like go back to the original conversation of buildings and retaining walls.
Anybody got a problem with that? Is that clear enough, staff? Mark, you good?
Megan, does it just rule out, what, fences? But I, I guess I'm having a hard time knowing what we're.
Um, I mean, fences, utility boxes, exposed pipes. I don't, I mean, I, yeah, I don't know what all you count as a structure. I haven't defined that, but I think this goes back to in part the original conversation, and certainly the stakeholders were like, you can start a little more conservative, and if it's going well, you can broaden it. And so um, I'm saying any, any building or structure is kind of the broadest you can get. Um, and it's not really what we discussed. And so it just feels, I mean, you know, there's plenty of wall surface with retaining walls and buildings. I'm not sure we're really limiting anyone's or just, you know, endeavors that might.
So I, I'm hearing the proposal being you may put a mural on a building or a, or an outbuilding or a retaining wall. Right? Any question? Everybody, anybody not okay with that? I think we're, I think we have a majority of okay with that. So that clarifies those two things. And I think we're ready for a motion.
I moved through Doc ordinance twenty eighty-one, adding section eighteen, thank you, section eighteen oh three, original art murals to the Hood River municipal code.
Moved by subpoena.
Uh, do you need, oh, with edit?
With noted edits. Uh, one being two inches versus six inches, one being uh, retaining walls and, and structures. Versus structure, retaining walls clarifying retaining, okay, retaining walls versus.
And, and the dates.
And the inclusion of dates.
Okay, stand by. This is the proposed motion. Does anybody have a concern about the clarity of the intention of this motion? Good. That's the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Grant. Oh, seconded by Grant. Uh, moved and seconded. Discussion?
I guess I'm, I'm just going to clarify my, my future vote. Um, and I do really want to thank staff for what has turned into a much longer project than I think we all thought. Um, I think it is a really good code for the rest of the city, um, but I, I am going to vote no just because of the issue with the historic downtown. And we had a unanimous, um, you know, recommendation from our, our folks that are experts in that area. Um, and we have all these other requirements for the historic downtown, for, you know, having compatible buildings, even if they're not the landmarks themselves. And so I just don't feel comfortable with that one bit, but I do want to say the rest of the code, I think, is good, and I'm excited for what it will do. So.
Thank you, Megan. Other discussion?
I will second one. Megan said, and I'm planning to vote no for the same reasons.
Thank you, Councillor Cunahan. Further discussion? Though we don't usually do this, we're going to do a roll call, because it's going to be hard to keep count. Uh, Councillor Cunahan?
No.
Councillor Zan Miller?
Yes.
Stepina?
Yes.
Saunders?
No.
Rivera?
No.
No.
Grant.
Yes.
I think that it currently is three to three. In the interest of being clear, does everyone agree that it's currently three to three? Chair votes nay, motion fails. Thank you all very much. It's sure that it's not over, but that's where we are today. We're gonna take a break. Okay, we are back from our break. Uh. Counselor Saunders.
Um. So I don't know if this is actually the, if it's that ordinance anymore or not, but. Wonder if I can make a motion, basically, that's the same as Doug's, but removing the allowance of. Murals in the downtown historic district, or I guess any historic district. Just for clarity, um, and see if we have. Votes for that?
So the mo- the the motion is kind of to talk about this more with that change to the code. Does that? Uh, I guess, let's tell me if this is wrong down. Moved by Saunders to do that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Grant. So discussion. Uh, we're about to take a vote on whether we want to keep talking about this.
And as I understand, the only change would be to expand the restricted zone to the entirety of the downtown historic district. Everything we have just been talking about would be the same.
That would be my motion, yes.
Yep.
And 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 the. The procedural mechanism is a a motion to reconsider this matter that was already disposed of. You could reconsider it like now, or you could reconsider it at a subsequent meeting, but. Since it's already been dealt with and disposed of, you would make a motion to reconsider. This item that was already disposed of.
When we, sorry, when we reconsider, is that 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 has to come back with a new ordinance, or what does that look like?
Um, if it if it requires, like, well, if you make a motion to reconsider, like, immediately now. Then and and that motion passes, and so that means the council says, yeah, let's reconsider this. Then you might want to make a motion. For something new. And I think the motion that you've just suggested is something that. You know, we can. You can say adopt, you know, what came to us tonight with these changes. And here's why. So it doesn't require a whole nother staff report and rigmarole. It's pretty surgical and it's easy to digest.
I'm going to say, we now have a motion. To reconsider. If if approved, then we will reconsider it, and then we'll talk about what the content is of it, okay? So moved and seconded to reconsider. Discussion about whether we would like to reconsider. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed to the motion to reconsider, say nay.
Mark, was that a yea or a nay?
Uh, let's say it was a yea.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. So we have chosen to reconsider this. Now, I can think of benefits to waiting two weeks, three weeks, and benefits to not waiting three weeks. So let's talk about that.
Yes, I like, I mean, we've we have spent a lot of our time and staff's time on this. I'd love to get something just done.
Jackie and Abigail and Dan, can we? Verbally in this moment. Uh, modify this. Uh, this uh document in a way that's clear, our intent is clear. Dan says yet.
You tell us. If it's simple, it's simple. If it's. It gets perfect brain surgery.
Alright.
Right. Um, so I'm gonna move to Doc ordinance twenty eighty one, adding section eighteen point zero three, original art murals to the hood river municipal code. Code with the amendments discussed tonight of. Um, two inches from the wall, um, retaining walls instead of all structures. And and the dates in the resolution, um, and also with the amendment to not allow murals in the historic district.
That is the proposed motion. Dan, how do you feel about that motion? Abigail, how do you feel about that? Is that clear? That was a very small change that she suggested.
I believe so. I'm just looking through the code to see where specifically that is brought up. And I think I see it in. Um, on page ten, eighteen point oh three point oh three oh, um. Uh, express except, yeah, section D, which talks about original art murals are allowed in designated historic districts and conservation districts, so that would be need to change. And then in the next section, also, uh, B, which says, uh. Murals on, let's see, murals on historic landmarks. This is the one that has the, um, I think it would just end with are prohibited, and then. The second sentence within the downtown district, uh. That would need to be reworded just because right now it talks about within seventy five feet, so we need to say all. Um, murals. You know, within the downtown district are prohibited and take out the language about um within seventy five feet. Are there other places in the code that you see would need to be amended?
No, and the the inch part is up in in oh three oh.
There's page thirteen C is all about the design standards particular to in the historic district.
Okay, so those could be removed.
Could just be scratched.
Okay, thank you. But the definition stays, other things stay.
Okay, so I, in plain language, feel like we just got approval of this proposal motion. Do we have a second? Second, second by Grant, discussion.
Uh, I haven't decided if I'm going to vote yes or not yet, but if I do, um, it will be. In the spirit of furthering things to incorporate it into other areas of the city, feel like. At one point, somebody said, you know, um. You know, maybe it it doesn't belong downtown, it belongs, um, you know, maybe behind the subway, I think was was the quote. Um, I just I vehemently disagree with that. I feel like it, uh, if for public art to be accessible, it needs to be where people are. Um, so this is in this, I vote yes, it's in the spirit of furthering things towards that.
Where's the edge? Is it eight? I can't remember.
I'm gonna look at the planning director to talk about the boundaries of the historic district.
We 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 do have a, we do have a map that is approved, um, generally from. Uh, I would call the north and western most boundary would be. Uh. Along Wasco Street, um, and I believe it's the previous Century Link, uh, building, um, and as far to Front Street. Um, and really State Street to the boundary down to between Seventh and Eighth, depending on whether you're in the C line of C. Or or three district, so.
Is the is the. Century Link building in or out?
It's in, it's a historic building, um, that has some significant.
And is the retaining wall on the county courthouse in or out?
The, uh, I believe it's. Yeah, I can, I'm gonna have to look.
I mean, I I agree, not behind the segue, but I'd like to see one closer, but.
I I believe it's, I believe the county courthouse in that part of the right away would be in until we get to county administration, which is out.
Great.
So, uh, uh, as well as, uh, the former Hood River's used building is out. So that's kind of our things.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Doug.
One more thing to inform my decision, um. We have a current mural. It's down on industrial. Does this in any way impact that existing mural?
I don't think so.
Think so. It would have. Of what we call nonconforming status. I don't know.
And I believe it was a council action that made that mural possible, so.
Is it not?
Council action to reconsider.
Is it in compliance with these requirements, you know?
No, it's not. It's in the historic district.
Oh, it's in the historic district, okay. So it would, it would be nonconforming in my view.
Which I think generally, no, I'm not attorney, we can't find a director in the city attorney, like, things that already exist, right? And then you create these new rules. You know, you would have to, like, take an action and make them retroactive.
Right.
And we're certain there's a resolution or an ordinance or something that. Can be referenced to to the creation of that mural?
I believe so. I believe that that mural was created through a a council action.
Hey, I can't remember if I was in the audience or up here for it, but I remember council approving it, you know, individually.
I I remember council approving it, but I just, I want to make sure that's a that's a solid thing.
Yeah.
So if 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 the current motion passes, we're not going out and covering that mural, like, that mural continues. Is that what we're all understanding?
Yeah, I mean, that that's, that's what you're saying, yeah.
Yes.
So we can let the minutes, you know, reflect that as, like, what was council's intention? Council's intention was to not. Impact that particular mural.
And this is the mural on the original wall of the Elks Park, I don't know what we're talking about, sorry, yeah. Okay, this one, oh, sorry, Mark, thank you.
Yeah, I just didn't, there there's a couple other tile murals that that are, um, on Seventh Streets. Uh, I thi- I think it's all sort of the same thing, although we didn't give that one permission, um. I.
The three rivers, the real market is out.
Mm-hmm. Kind of.
Vote no, but I I think this is a lesser thing. So i- if you guys have four votes, I'll vote no, probably.
Okay. Motion is on the table. Any discussions?
I just want to make a comment. You know, I I I did talk to a member of our landmarks review board, and this individual was stating how. Yeah, people from all over come and visit our downtown historic society or district. And, you know, I had asked a. A question. You know, how do you all gauge the measure of success for for local folks that that come downtown? Because when I go through downtown, you know, I I see. Specific groups down here, and when I say that, I say, I mean. I don't necessarily see our downtown embracing or having, but I see locals Wednesday. But when I look at the flyers for local for locals Wednesdays, they're only in English. So I think that we also have to challenge. Some of these structures or organizations that exist to make our downtown more inclusive of non-English. Speaking individuals, because everything that I see is. Targeted and marketed towards those that are English-speaking to come and enjoy our downtown. So I just wanted to make that comment. Um. For us all to think about.
Thank you.
Grant.
Uh, I concur with, uh, Counselor Stepina that, um. I'm disheartened that we would deny opportunity for folks to shape their future in a particular area, just considering a particular area. Or built during a particular timeframe. Uh, I believe that opportunities such as this should be open for and available for everyone. Um, to shape their future or our collective future. Um, in addition, uh. I am not, I mean. Regarding the the content thing, I'm not, uh, entertaining that as an argument personally, because, uh. Our community is full of diverse viewpoints, people, and we don't necessarily shove any one individual out of the community just because they might disagree with us. Um, if we did, that would, we would have serious. Greater problems than I think we have running, um. Art on a wall. Uh, so. Oh, wow, I would still be supportive of this resolution. Uh, that's that's my only concern with segregating that particular part of town.
Thank you. Two thoughts for me, one is. I I strongly agree with with Counselor Paulson that we have to entertain the opposing view and, uh. Live with the fact that folks disagree. I don't want to have to live with the fact that folks disagree fifteen feet high on the wall forever, so that. There's speech and there's. Uh, paint. And the second is, in the e- in the environmental movement, people say all the victories are temporary and all the losses are permanent, like, once they pave over. The redwoods, they're gone, and I kind of have a similar feeling about this, like, the cute historic downtown is the cute historic downtown until it isn't, and. If what folks love about it is that it's. Retained that coherent. Look of the old buildings. That's, that would be disrupted by the change and would never come back, so the. Analogy seems true to me. Other comments? Other comments? Let's take a vote again, and we'll start on Zoom again, Counselor Coonahan.
Yay.
Yay from Tim. Mark?
No.
No from Mark. Doug?
No.
Megan?
Yes.
Gladys?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you all so much for your hard work. Okay. Uh I think it takes us to consent agenda, am I right? Yes.
Can I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to extend this one more step, but this was ordinance language, so this was our, this council's our public hearing. Is that correct? And now, and so we'll have our um city recorder do first reading at the, when we get to the city recorder or the I'm looking for the next step so that we make this proper ordinance.
Oh, it'll be recorder's action, I think we do first reading.
First reading, and then we'll bring it to you uh at your next meeting as a second reading and adoption.
That was what I would expect.
Yeah, so I just wanted to be clear that like you will see this again at the end of this meeting and at your next meeting, but hopefully the conversation parts over.
Great, thank you, Grant. Do you need a motion for first reading or recovery?
No, when it's, when it comes up on the act, on the action part of the agenda.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Abigail.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, now consent agenda, we have minutes just for my edification, why are we approving two sets of minutes?
Because I was.
There there are two different dates.
Good, thanks.
Not two two sets, two dates.
Great. Uh.
One, oh.
I I think it's two sets of minutes. Yeah, okay, okay, great. Uh Megan?
Just really minor, I had emailed Jen earlier, um and I think she's already changed it, but I just want to let you all know, um the minutes for last meeting, um page thirty-three, it says the mayor announced the ordinance had passed, um that is the one I was sharing, so I just said uh it wasn't the mayor, it was me. Um so I don't think we need to do anything tonight, but FYI.
Correction noted.
Yep, and I just had a another slight typographical one on that same one, the next uh line under the city recorder just has my first name and my last, so change it to match, yay. Yeah.
Good. And then would anyone like to pull off any item from the consent agenda?
Can you please pull the OLCC license?
The OLCC permit will be pulled from the consent agenda. Uh I would entertain a motion.
I would move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Moved by Saunders.
Second.
Second by Pa- Paulson. Uh discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, chair votes aye, motion passes. Uh I would entertain a motion on the OLCC permit.
I would move we approve the OLCC permit for Kickstand Coffee and Kitchen.
I will second.
Second by Stapina. Uh discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Want to say a few words, Gladys?
Yes, I will be abstaining from OLCC permit, application approvals, this is not a reflection of these businesses or their owners, rather, I object the fact that we do not have enough transportation op- options for people who visit these establishments. As a result, they may end up getting behind the wheel and putting themselves and others at risk. If we and our community partners are able to provide adequate transportation during late evenings and weekends, I will be happy to start approving OLCC applications again.
Thank you. Uh, chair votes aye, motion passes. Uh discussion items, development code Kevin. We're on red circle. Kevin, you gotta tap the ring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. Uh you may recall that when we met with you in January to discuss the scope of work for the development code audit and update and the grant from DLCD that is helping to pay for it, uh the project is being done in two phases. First phase focuses on the audit, second focuses on the code update. Tonight, we'd like to discuss the code audit, make sure we're getting started on the right track. We're joined tonight by Matt Hasty of the consulting firm MIG, uh who's managing the product, project with his colleagues Kerry Brennicky and Katie Vickers. Uh we're being supported by staff from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, including the regional representative Angie Brewer, and we're receiving technical guidance from Mattie Phillips of DLCD's housing uh team. We do have uh obviously here a few slides, including a quick refresher on some of the project goals. Um the audit will lead to code updates that are expected to make the code clearer, easier to to use, understand and administer. While this project is not focused exclusively on housing issues, we expect future standards for housing will be clear and objective and will address local local housing needs in a manner consistent with state law. Staff is well aware of council's interest in a an equitable and inclusive process as well. Um as explained in the cover sheet in pages forty-one and forty-two of your packet, we're asking for feedback from council on stakeholder groups as well as on the format of the code audit report that will be produced. I'm gonna hand things over to Matt for a few minutes to talk a bit about the tasks, the process, timeline and a document that's included in your packet on pages forty-three and forty through forty-seven, the code audit outline.
All right, thanks for having me here. Again, Matt Hasty with MIT, um and when I say we, I really mean the folks that work with me back in my office with some help from me. Um so I'm gonna pretty briefly walk through this graphic and just talk about the steps in the process. Um and then I'll talk a little bit about the first work product that we sent y'all and hit that at a pretty high level too. So in terms of the process, um we've prepared the outline of the code audit, again, I'll talk about that in a moment. We're here to talk to you and as Kevin said, make sure we're on the right track moving forward, we'll get um some input on a couple of key things. And then our next task is to produce a first draft of this code audit report. So that's kind of where we spend a lot of the time and effort is really in that process. And then we go through kind of an iterative process to review that with community stakeholders, with you all, with the planning commission, with staff um and kind of further refine that. So um first step is to produce a draft, review that with um Kevin and Dustin, other staff, make sure that's looking good. Then we have these stakeholder interviews. And I'll say that often when we do sort of an early draft of an audit report, there are um certain topics where we might have some optional approaches, how to update the code to address the things we're finding in the audit, so that's then a good opportunity to get some feedback on those optional approaches and just find out like what's most important to folks in terms of parts of the development code that really affect them and that um they um want to see changed or or what have you, so it's kind of the first step is to have those stakeholder meetings and Kevin will talk more about um the groups we've identified for those. Um come back to the planning commission and you, tell you, hey, here's what we've heard, here's where we think we're headed based on that. Produce an updated draft of the code audit report. Um to the extent we've gotten some good direction in terms of those places where we had, we had options, we'll identify some recommendations related to that. Um review that with staff again, come back, talk to you all again, and then produce a final audit that then leads us to uh the next steps. And then there's a couple of other things we're doing in that process too. One, we're putting together a community engagement plan for phase two for the code update process. Again, we want to make sure that we're talking to people before we put together that process, so that's informed by discussions with all of you and stakeholders. And then also doing an assessment of diversity, equity and inclusion associated with the code audit process and the code itself generally. Um and how we're gonna then incorporate and do something similar when we get to the code update process, um the phase two of the process. So that's kind of the timeline. Um we're scheduled to uh kind of have a a final product of the code audit um process, the phase one process in approximately early October. Um so we've got a few months to go. Um but we're getting pretty close to getting started on a big chunk of the work, which is again that draft code audit report. So that's all on that. Um and then I'll talk just briefly about the code audit outline that we sent you, um and then I'll turn it back over to Kevin. And then I'll answer any questions y'all have or just kind of hear some comments from you. So this audit outline, it's really just meant to get us kind of all on the same page about what it is we're reviewing, how we're reviewing it. So it highlights some of the goals that Kevin talked about just a moment ago. Um it identifies a couple of options for the overall approach and the structure of the audit. I'll say a little bit more about that in a moment. Um it identifies some of those key state legislative requirements, particularly related to housing um that we're addressing. The city got a grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, it's part of their housing program, so it's very important to be addressing those things. And then it's got a pretty long list of different types of standards that have already been identified by staff as and probably some of you all and planning commission and others um over the last few years, it's things that need to be looked at. And then it outlines uh kind of the the approach we take to the executive summary that's part of the audit. Um in terms of those couple of options or structure, we lay those out, one is um kind of a, we call it a standalone report option where um we're providing a high level, but also a certain amount of detail in the audit report. The other option is sort of a more informal option where we're just going into sections of the code and commenting on them. Um and we're not producing the same sort of longer report, but we do have an executive summary. We're recommending that kind of standalone option because was while we are, you know, planning and expecting to go through that phase two process. There will be sort of an endpoint to this process and that report will just help kind of describe things in a little more detail and I think button things up a little more and not force you to like look at every line of the code to see what things we recommended changing. So that's sort of the the rationale for recommending that particular approach. So hopefully that makes sense to y'all. Um and I'm gonna bring Kevin back up, talk about stakeholders and then see what kind of questions and comments y'all have.
Thank you, Matt. Um yeah, again, um we'd like to talk about stakeholder groups. We've put together um a list of folks that uh we'd like to work with. Um and uh the scope of work, as you may recall, and it's in in your packet includes up to ten meetings with stakeholder groups, with the representatives who have experience using the code or who may be impacted by changes to it. Um feedback also will be collected from other interested parties through uh comment form on the project webpage. Stakeholder group feedback will be used to inform findings of the code audit, as well as the community engagement plan that Matt just referenced. Because we're limited to ten meetings, we'll need representatives from different groups to participate in meetings together, and it's our intent that they complement each other. So uh the list that's before you, uh again drafted by staff of pers- respective stakeholder groups uh include developers and builders, uh including those who develop multifamily housing. We of course anticipate assistance from the city planning commission and city landmarks board, who are familiar with the development code. Um as they've been responsible for reviewing and approving certain development applications, we would like to meet with the mayor's equity group. And uh with represent- representatives from Chihuana Housing. Um a meeting with Spanish-speaking community members will be organized and facilitated by a third party, who's in touch with the Nextdoor Incorporated about this. Uh the Mid-Columbia Economic Development District, Port of Hood River and Hood River County Chamber of Commerce should have input on how the the development code uh affects businesses and the economic development in the area. Uh the Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation and the Mid-Columbia Community Action Council have input on housing issues. And because they often partner, it may be appropriate for Enchewana Housing to participate in in that group. Uh if you've got any feedback on that, I'm curious. Um it will be important to meet with the Hood River County Community Development Department, as their staff is responsible for implementing the development code inside the urban growth boundary outside of the city limits, the area that we refer to as the urban growth area. Uh City of Hood River Engineering and Public Works Departments, Fire and Building Departments are all involved in the development process. Uh the Police Department may have valuable input too, recognizing the community development or community service office, their pardon me, is involved in court enforcement. Uh and there are a number of advocacy groups uh that may want to participate, such as those interested in dark skies, tree protection or safe routes to schools, um as well as organizations that we hear from occasionally, such as Housing Land Advocates, the Fair Housing Council and Thrive Hood River. So staff is asking if uh council supports the list of groups that's been assembled or if there are other stakeholder groups that should be added to this list. Um with that, looking for comments, questions from you uh this evening.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh Gladys and then Megan.
Mayor, help me understand who is involved in your equity group? Or are there specific agencies that are advising you there?
There's no agencies, it's sort of a cooperative effort of folks I've reached out to and folks who have said yes. Uh and so people sort of self-volunteer themselves and some folks uh say they're interested but aren't able to to commit the time. Um and the the attendance is not consistent, but there has been a nice collection of folks over the various meetings. Uh I think everyone who has attended has been Latino or Indian.
When I look at this list, that's just what I'm thinking of. Is there Latino Latina representation? Is there representation of our four treaty tribes that we have here? You know, I see Jules on here, I see Kenny's on here. I'm curious to hear if the Energy Council is involved in any way as we think about you know, just environmental, social justice and all that, uh to make, wondering if they're gonna be involved in any of these meetings.
Um to to this point, uh Counselor, we haven't discussed uh inclusion of the equity group, but I've been in touch with Lindsay Muthura recently, I'm happy to reach out to her.
Sorry, you said equity group, but I think you meant Energy Council.
Pardon me, yes.
And then I was happy to hear that you mentioned for number four, for Spanish-speaking communities, when I first saw this, it it made me concerned and wondering if the mayor's equity group was going to be giving recommendations during the Spanish-speaking community numbers, but it sounds like there's been conversations with the Nextdoor. Yeah, okay. Cool, thanks. Can you walk us through how this will be marketed to these groups? Is it, hey, here are the dates that we're gonna have these meetings, please have people sign up by this date and time?
Uh starts with conversations with representatives of the groups. We've got um a a window of time carved out um mid-May to early June, where we would like to be meeting with folks. Um as I mentioned, I've already reached out to Nextdoor Incorporated and uh speaking with Eve recently, but uh I wanted to make sure we land us by the council before reaching out to other organizations.
It's direct invite.
This is not advertisement and we'd like to, it is specific groups that are are going to be directly engaged as stakeholders, so it's not open advertisement, it is it is outreach and scheduling meetings with.
Thank you, I should have clarified that, yeah, I was not intending that this is open to anyone, but that it's very specific groups that are gonna be involved, thanks.
Anything else, Megan?
Um thank you, Kevin. I think three things, one, two, your point of Chihuana maybe could fit into two different categories, I think just asking them which they prefer seems super reasonable. Um and then I had two other questions or comments. Um one for the Spanish-speaking community, number one, uh obviously important. I am wondering if we want to like tailor that or or direct it. And I, you know, and I don't necessarily know to who, but like it should it be Spanish-speaking folks who have um, you know, gone through additions or or other in interactions with the code, or is it business owners, is it general public? Like, what what are we hoping to get from folks in that? How do we want to make sure we're reaching the right people within the Spanish-speaking community
Certainly.
to participate?
To date, uh conversations, just just reached out last week and got in touch with Eve and uh expressed our interest in working with folks who do have some familiarity with the development code, but don't expect this to be a group of folks um where everybody knows the development code inside out. There are a lot of different um reasons that we we would like a spectrum of of interested parties to participate and if you've got any, anything else you want to add about um a particular
discussion?
Yeah, I think part of part of the the DEI discussion is is not necessarily engaging subject matter experts on it. Um but trying to get some input on these codes affect your life, streets that you walk on, places where you may live. I don't necessarily need a code ma- matter expert to have some level of engagement to how will this, uh this could affect you in the future, and I'd like to hear your voice. I don't necessarily need you to turn the knob.
Um and then my last one, which I think I mentioned the last time this came up, is, you know, so we've got developing team builders. Uh obviously really important, but I am wondering if we, you know, it looks like we have a a potential uh tenth option out there, um is more like, you know, the the individual homeowners or landowners that are doing more of that kind of infill style of an ADU or a mother-in-law suite. or mother-in-law suite or an addition that are that are adding some capacity and working with the code, but certainly aren't, this isn't their day job. And so I think to the to the point of, like in our last thing, we just discussed in code of like, well, I read the mural thing differently to be like, well, that means this. They may read it differently than a professional developer and so seeing what their input might be, I could see being valuable.
And we we also have the full open invite for comments from everyone. So there's kind of the organized groups, there's also the group of please everyone have an opportunity to comment that we have directed to. So I think we're aware that not everyone is, I think the community of builders here are more akin to small format. So I think our local builders are actually more the the localized ADU type of infill builder. I think, I hope we have that covered and how how it is readable. Definitely some of the keys are, how does this become a code that is clear regardless of your subject matter level of expertise, whether you're a homeowner, whether you're sophisticated builder, whether you're sentex Lennar Homes. But we want to make sure that we hear from those folks too.
Okay, well, since we have a tenth spot open, I I would suggest maybe finding like the group of folks who in the last five years have done little bits and pieces.
Resident color, resident builder.
Yeah. Mark, for instance.
Great, Mark and then Gladys.
Yeah, I just want to Gladys mention it, but I think the Energy Council is a good, you know, they have some people that focus on lead type stuff and I think that'll overlap with some of the stuff you're doing, so.
Thank you, Mark. I think there used to be or still is a group in White Salmon that's something building council that seemed to be really like pushing the needle on the national level to come up with alternate building standard. And I don't remember all the details, but I'd be happy to tell you what I know later. Just they seem like a fortunate neighbor to have, Gladys.
Dustin, during the, wasn't there a group of Latino business owner, Latino business owners that that y'all connected with when we were talking about the Heights Project?
Yeah, we, they were really focused around the heights. It's kind of an easier group to reach because they were kind of already by established community by, at least by geography and common interest. I expect, and actually we saw some common faces when we did through the Nextdoor, through that participation of those members and actually the Affordable Housing Production Strategy when we, so that the community is is well-connected and it continues, we continue to see some of the common folks that that we've engaged with in the past and I hope we see them again because a lot of this is to some extent is relationship building and trust and you continue to see me, I hope we eventually, you know, we continue to connect. So we do have a business group, but they're not dissimilar from the the, actually the really great volunteers who continue to show up and help us.
Great. About the stakeholder groups specifically, I view this list, that's fine. That's I see four groups specifically on here that are probably going to be more fruitful in terms of producing actually does bring costs down. The first group, builders and builders, City Planning Commission, Plan Everything Out, Hood River County Community Development as well, Expansion UGB, et cetera, as well as City of Hood River Engineering Public Works, et cetera. They service the properties that are would part to be developed. My concern I have is especially with the first one, the first group developers and builders, is one meeting going to be enough with those people who are actually doing the building to fully address all the code audits, the updates, every, all the issues that they could possibly raise and bring up and address? Is one period of time going to be enough to get that done?
I doubt it, so I'll answer that one, these guys can chime in. So we have, oh, okay, thank you, sorry. We have the set of meetings at the, out near the front of the process, so we get some feedback and we provide them with some information, like here are some of the things we're finding, what do you think? But I'd say a couple of things, one, this is just the phase one code audit. We get into a phase two code update, we're going to have a lot more conversations. Two, I think, you know, we're going to be making these documents, these draft reports available to folks and we would love to get their input. We just might not sit down with them, at least as a consulting team, and have a whole nother series of meetings with them as part of those code audit reports process. But yeah, I'm sure, I would hope that folks continue to weigh in, not just at that first set of meetings. But during this audit phase, we aren't planning, at least again for the consulting team, to have multiple rounds of those same types of meetings, so I don't know if that answers that question. But I do think, yeah, we're going to want to hear from people more than just one time during the process.
The other issues, we're not starting from scratch here. So this is, this is not the first time I've ever heard from a builder. We actually engaged MIG, actually we engaged APG, Angelo Planning Group, to do some audit and process before that was inclusive with some of the local building community. So we have background documents over the past ten years and processes that were separate from this that they were brought into saying this is where we think things could be smoothed out. So the stakeholder meeting, although it's one here, it's not, I wouldn't consider it the body of work for this group of stakeholders. Matt's going to have dozens and dozens of interpretations that I've done over the past decade where things have been sticky. Worked with groups, both in our our permitting enhancement project, we did an audit process before. So we've done a lot of things with the building group that we're going to bring as part of our background information that he gets to sort through as well, so.
With that in mind, I hope that that group in particular is prepped, informed and ready to go once they are given this one opportunity to be at the front end of this process. The understanding that it's there, one group that's highly impacted by this. It's, in my opinion, helpful to get them ahead of the process quite a bit and be out in front of some of these things.
Other questions, comments? Kevin, does this get to what you needed?
Very helpful, we did ask about the format of the code audit report, if you've got a, if you're supportive of our recommendation, be helpful to have feedback on that as well, thank you.
Standalone report, sounds good.
Great, great thumbs up.
Thank you.
Mark, hand, Mark.
Yeah, Kevin, the first bullet for, you know, the goals is organization readability and plain language. Does does that include, I hope, the openness to consolidate and and reduce and and basically look at the history of how fifteen chapters got built and isn't, wouldn't four chapters be a better way to do it? That some structural thing like that.
Thank you, councillor. Personally, as we've entered the project, I've discussed this with Dustin, I've tried to be a blank slate to be open to change as it comes based on what we hear from the community, from the Planning Commission, from the council. So I will be looking to Matt based on his experience to to guide us through those options. But Dustin, you want to add anything to expectations for for what you see coming?
Certainly, organization readability and format are very important. They can be often as important as the technical terms when it comes to the ability to navigate and manage your way through the code. Does it flow? Does it harmonize? Does it make sense from top to bottom? That is, that format and organization is a no small part, part of the outcome. I'm also trying to be a blank slate, however, I have, I have expectations that I bring along with this. And I I know we'll do a great job of of coming together and making sure that we're concise, complete, and we have the right tool for the job when we're done.
Yeah, we're all beasts of our existing way of doing things, right? And we're all slaves to that a little bit, so having the consultant sort of challenge like, why, why don't you mush those two together? Or why don't you split that one apart? That's good stuff, yeah.
Questions, comments?
I'm sorry, before we wrap this up, there's a motion in the packet, so I'm looking to staff. Do you need a formal motion or is the direction that you got from council sufficient?
I feel like we've got good direction, do you think it's important to have a motion, Dustin?
Want to just to pretty get official?
Sure.
And I will go through the code audit outline using a standalone audit report and that we approve those stakeholder groups identified by staff, including small residential building.
And Energy Council.
And Energy Council to participate in a code audit interview.
Moved by Grant.
I'll take it.
Second by Megan, discussion. On favor? Opposed? Chair, no time motion passed, good work, thank you all.
What do you for up, please?
Well, no, it's the mayor and councillor compensation.
Oh, thank you, sorry, I'm losing track of the meeting, it's been so eventful. Thanks, so I think the mayor has mentioned in council, in mayor call a couple of times or mayor comments and you, enough of you have agreed that you'd like to see this topic be brought forward. So in your packet state, you have just a short memo about council and mayoral compensation. I put in the packet because I think we can verify that your compensation has not been reviewed in the last fifteen years. We actually think that might be much closer to probably twenty-five years, but we don't have documentation of that, so. But it is covered in the in the charter that it takes five members of council to change the compensation for council, but you do not need to have an outside committee or you don't have to take a vote of people, anything else. It really is a pretty streamlined, that it simply takes five votes from council. Your current compensation is a hundred dollars a month for the mayor and fifty dollars a month for council. We don't actually know how or why that was set, but that was a flat rate that didn't have any rate of change. So however you would choose to go about this, it would be my recommendation that we either index it to something that that has its own rate of change or that we really commit to doing this maybe every five years or something, just to have some kind of check in. And so I've given you a couple of different options of ways that you might look at just the methodologies that has nothing to do with like how much you want, might want compensation to be. But these are just ideas that came off the top of my head or models I knew from other cities, there there's nothing perfect about them. And I think, you know, as the mayor has presented it to you and he can speak to this more eloquently than I can, really the goal in thinking about this from this perspective or this conversation was about reducing barriers and encouraging folks in our community to run for office and to serve in office, recognizing the commitment that it takes and some of the sacrifices that folks have to make in order to to be effective in these roles. So I think those are kind of my opening comments, I'm here to answer any questions and really take direction on more research or other actions you'd like to take. And then if you have clear direction, we would need to come back to you with a resolution for a formal action.
Thank you, I'll give you, questions, comment?
I can start. Yeah, I'm generally supportive of of some higher number and I don't know that amount for a general discussion of options, I appreciate staff gave us three. I would be generally in favor of the like the flat rate or indexing the area median income. I'm uncomfortable tying it to a group of folks at the county that are deciding something about county commissioner things and knowing that, you know, their their roles may change, that committee may make decisions really based on the county's financial position versus what, you know, what they think that commissioners are actually worth and so that feels like it's a few two steps away from city council. The other two feel like, yeah, I think good metric bumps and things that can change either annually or every few years. I would also say, yeah, the having having a set amount we give away each month makes sense, I'm a little less sensible with the kind of the other benefits type thing, like health insurance or these other stipends. So I think that starts to get a lot more complicated for long-term budgeting. Because it'd be very variable which councillors will even use it and and especially how health insurance can skyrocket as we all are aware. So that's where I'm currently at.
Thank you, Megan.
Doug. Very similar to what Megan just said, you know, amicable to index to area median income. Also don't want to get into the the whole stipend thing, the the one thing might that might feel differently about is perhaps technology. Just because it's, it gets dicey if we're going to start using things like, you know, I have, I have an iPad, right? And I would use this iPad just for this, right? For explicit reasons, that's the one thing, but it's not a big deal. I I will say, I've had a lot of discussions about this with people. One of my favorite things to ask someone is, what what do you think the mayor makes? And they say, well, if you say it like that, it's got to be like forty-five thousand dollars a year, it's a hundred dollars. So I I feel like people have no concept of of what it is and then usually the follow-up is, well, you must be out of your mind, you know. But, you know, I remember when we were doing, you know, the work plan session and putting up our stickers and and all that kind of stuff and Mayor Blackburn had brought this up and I I agree, I think it's tremendous barrier for a lot of people that, you know, a single parent that can't afford childcare or an hourly employee that has to, you know, it's not making, you know, two hours or three hours or ten hours or whatever it is of income. You know, I feel like government shouldn't be limited to to those that can afford it or those that have the time. And that's why I think often city councils across, you know, this country are pretty boring and are pretty uniform and are not inclusive and not diverse. And we're lucky to have diversity in this community and I think this is a way to to address that. So I'm in favor of, you know, of something.
Echo that sentiment and, you know, I recall a couple of years ago, actually many years ago, before I was on this table here, coming to you about this specific topic, Mr. Mayor, we need to do something about this.
Well done.
Here, here, high five. Yeah, agree with options one or three and would consider a technology like an iPad that's just given by the city, Brad comp all that capabilities and whatnot, thanks.
Tim, turn to him.
Yes, part of my disconnect is I really don't understand what the main motivator would be for people to run for office. And I don't think that we have a good feel for that. Is it money? Is it time? Is it equipment? You know, I think we're, at this point, kind of guessing what it is that would motivate people. Don't remove that type of information. It's really hard to say what what would. I think in a lot of cases, it might be time, right? Some cases it could be money. Equipment, maybe, but time is probably the most important one.
I guess I was thinking about it sort of as the inverse, Tim, what would be the barrier? I'm interested to think about it as what would motivate someone, I'm not sure I, I'm not sure I am as excited about motivating someone to do it, I'm more excited about if they're motivated, what's the hurdle and and money could remove a hurdle?
But isn't it the same thing though, Mayor? I mean, it's kind of this or that. You know, if you don't have enough time, that's a barrier.
Megan and then Mark.
So to part of this, I I think money and time are often tied together. And and I'm aware I'm in a very privileged place, but if if we were talking about the kind of money this gave, that opens up the possibility that if I want to do this, I can maybe, you know, drop a few hours from my day job and have some more time and space for this sort of thing or, you know, to what Doug said of, okay, I I'm an hourly person and maybe I drop the second job because I have this instead and I have more time for it or and and then it's the flexibility depending on what the individual person's needs are of maybe that it is the actual money thing of I need to have childcare or I need to get, you know, taxis down every time we have a meeting or or, you know, I don't, you know, I think that's kind of similar, very different things, but similar to a lot of those studies they've done of like, well, if you give people money, they will put it towards the best need they have. We don't have to decide for them. And so I I see it answering multiple potential options. And so I I see it answering multiple potential options depending on the individual person's circumstances.
Mark.
Yeah, I I certainly support reducing barriers. And I I think that that is important and that's the goal. If it, you know, if it's this amount of money or some other amount of money, I I have no real idea. So so I think A, keep it really simple, whether it's just, you know, pick a pick one of these numbers and then have an inflation index on it or the AMI thing slightly more complicated. And then certainly add the every two election cycles and survey people to see you know, to get a sense of if we address the barrier and and if not, were we close and and things like that. So I think I don't think we have the data now, but I think that we can get the data through a couple of election cycles. So and but making it just dirt simple for staff, I think is important. So.
Tim, your hand is still raised. Did you have more to add?
I do. So what do people feel about a sliding scale? And some people have you know, obviously more barriers than others. Right? Do you want to give somebody that's well-to-do? Eighteen thousand dollars? For what reason? That person doesn't have a barrier. All right. Is that the intent? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I got it. Sliding scale, Tim. I was I wasn't sure if there was more. Folks, anybody want to respond to Tim's? Grant?
Not explicitly related to councillor Cunahan's statement. If somebody is making enough money, they're more than welcome to donate it to back or to any charity that they desire. That's up to them to choose to do. Generally, I am supportive of the concepts more of AMI, that methodology as compared to a flat rate. Flat rates, in my opinion, are can be arbitrary. Making it some percentage like ten percent in this example of AMI alludes to, we are going to spend approximately ten percent of our time doing these things. In the case of the mayor, in this example, twenty percent. And so on average, it's compensation or whatnot for that time spent. It allows other groups to, people who are parents, for example, to get a babysitter for their kids. So their spouse doesn't have to take the day off and watch the kiddo. It allows other folks to not have the second job. It allows the opportunity for people to come and actually participate instead of as mentioned by others, only those who can afford to do it or those who are willing to sacrifice in order to do it. I don't think in this example, that this amount of money will motivate anyone to run for office based on its size. You cannot live generally on seven hundred and fifty dollars or seven hundred and forty-two dollars a month. And also, should they choose to do that, I believe in the electorate has a sophisticated enough intellect to weed those people out in the veracity and complexity of their election process or their ideas. If they're just here for a paycheck, I I would imagine that their policies wouldn't be as stand up. And the the election process, I believe, would expose some of that. That's speculation on my part, but that's my speculation. If if they're doing it for seven hundred and forty-two dollars a month. In in indexing it going forward, it to AMI, I believe, makes sense. We would just do it as an annual process. It's a fair, it's a fairly simple process to go through. I understand it's a dollar here and there is a pain to track versus budgeting for a flat amount, but it's not, it's not necessarily the worst thing in the world. If we are all issued iPads, cool. That's common. And we would have to sign it. I don't necessarily need an iPad, but if if we are choosing to go down that route, we all would sign agreements that the technology suite not to use it for anything else but this, which is fine. And I would not be in favor of us having healthcare available to us because of the complexities that existed within our current system.
Thank you, Grant.
Tim, how does the feel free to donate it back?
How does, what's your reaction to that with sliding scale? Or not donate it back, but donate it to a, you know, nonprofit or something?
Well, I've been talking to do that for years. And I'm not able to.
May I comment on that?
Tim, Abigail's going to speak. Go ahead.
Yes, and councillor Cunahan is correct. He has he has tried to donate his stipend. Well, he has asked to forego it and have the city donate his stipend to the charity of his choice. And after extensive conversation with city attorney, our recommendation was not to allow that because it puts the city in the spot of the city donating and choosing charities or elected officials directing where city funds would go. If a councillor were to receive funds and then make a donation, of course, that's totally allowed, whatever, you know, you receive your funds. But I just want to be clear that our recommendation would not be to allow someone to forego a stipend and then for the city to donate directly to a charity.
So how does the councillor donates feel to you, Tim?
Like a tax liability.
In that a councillor would receive the funds and then, you know, so it would be received as income and then donate it, may or may not be a tax break for them.
Okay.
What about the, what about the, I mean, right now it's two to one, like, does that feel like the right thing? So if we did, let's just say we did flat rate. You guys like the seven fifty, fifteen hundred? Does that feel like the right scale and ratio?
I have a, yeah, I have a question for the mayor. In relation to others, how much time do you spend versus the rest of the council? Do you do you estimate or think? Or workload or public face in terms of your position versus others?
It's hard for me because this job, having been both, this job is more than twice as fun as being a councillor.
I assume that's because you meet with the city manager every week as opposed to every other.
So, you know, I mean, honestly, it's like, it's that, right? So that's a factor. I would say that the mayor works more than twice as much as the councillors. But I don't know what all the councillors do. You know, so that's, if if we're asking that question, I would say it's more than twice as much.
And you know, this is, I I think I'm in support for the equity lens. And this has always been my struggle is that like, whether whether you're the mayor or the councillor, like I I think all of us on here are dedicated and put a lot of time in, but there isn't really a job description. And so like, you could get elected and really not put a lot of time in if, and you may not get reelected, but for four years or two years. There are, there aren't a lot of requirements. And I don't think that's a reason to not do this or not give people real money, but it is hard to judge, you know, based on like, we have a very dedicated mayor right now. And I do agree, he's putting a lot of time in and I appreciate it so much. But how do you gauge that compared to, you know, potential future mayors versus other councillors? And I don't necessarily know.
My daughter works for a member of Congress and I would just remind us all that the main qualification for being a member of Congress is that you got elected. So, I mean, it's it's hard to regulate that.
Yeah, the only thing I would say you'd have is in your rules for council, we talked about if someone was consistently absent. And again, you don't have an action that you could take, but we did put in there an expectation that people are going to attend. I don't remember the specifics, so that could at least put a bit of pressure on them.
I will say that for me, when I came into this, you know, I'd watched a couple of meetings. I had gone to Paul and said, hey, I'm I have three kids. And if I were to do this, I have to you know, pay for daycare. And when I first was appointed this thing called COVID hit and this learning curve that, oh, my gosh, I feel like I I had to put in that overtime to like, what is that jargon mean? Because I have no idea. So there is that, that if you are brand new to having a seat at the table, you're going to put in more time because you're trying to catch up and understand what everyone else is talking about.
Yeah, just expand on that a little bit. I think these numbers would reduce enough barriers minimally to encourage more people to not say no. I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily want to just jack these way up. But I I believe we should, if we decide to move forward in this sort of manner, keep these numbers very modest in nature anyway.
We want to value people's time to do this work and for those individuals who maybe don't have certain privileges, this could be, you know, a nice way to incentivize their time. Again, not doing it just for the money, but to value their time and energy and coordination and everything that goes on with taking on this role.
May, sorry.
Oh, no, I just raised my hand. I guess and some of this is the, because we're, and I'm talking to Abigail, we we are, you know, on the earlier forefront of of this kind of change. I can also see this being a like, you know, the numbers in here or another number we pick of like, let's try something for a round or two and reassess because we don't know. And I'm not sure we will know without just trying. And I, yeah, you know, to I think what Grant said of like, this is a massive increase from what we have. But is still, yeah, I don't think it's suddenly the incentive for people to go, ooh, my day job is going to be this. So it seems like a reasonable balance between rewarding people for the work this does take and and also not making it the, you know, the cushy, easy, oh, sorry. Anyway, yeah.
Doug? So let's decide to let's decide that this is a long enough discussion. Staff wants to know what to bring back. Does anybody want to make a suggestion? I'll make a suggestion. I propose we're going to try this. So we should just do flat rate for two cycles and see what happens. How does that feel?
I'm on board. Does that include technology or no technology?
The county, the county gets iPads, I think. Is that the technology that's meaningful, you guys?
And to clarify a little bit about the technology. If I was to use my own personal iPad, you know, that gets really dicey, right? So it's more about a protection of data privacy than a shiny new toy. I I don't want a second iPad or I'm a one-phone person and all that kind of stuff. It's just more about data protection. It's more about data integrity. It's more about ensuring that the notes and the things that I'm taking as a city councillor are are protected. So just clarifying that.
That would be like a ban on personal technology.
But I don't.
We shouldn't be doing that anyway, really. We 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 make ourselves vulnerable to, you know, if someone did a FOIA or something like that, you could be full of your kid's pictures or something like that if you're double dipping. So it's not a good idea for a councillor. It's not a good idea for data protection.
And I would also add that for an individual who maybe doesn't have an iPad or doesn't have a laptop, that that would be another barrier if you're having to do it out of your phone to have to read minutes or reply back to emails and whatnot. So that's, that's when I saw the technology piece, that's what I thought about. Is this is offering an opportunity for someone else to have a similar advantage to, you know, us that have iPads and laptops.
How about offering an option?
Say more. Flesh that out a little for me, Tim.
I want the money. I want the iPad.
Oh, I see. Right. Or you're right, right, right.
The the money and the iPad are sorry, the money and the iPad are two separate things. Having a technology suite available to us covers more of a liability than the actual payment or support. Given our public roles.
So the option, I'm hearing that as an argument against the option, Grant.
Yeah, I mean, people could still choose to use their own personal devices. It just wouldn't be, it's just not best practice.
I, yeah, I see the value in having some sort of technology, whether whether it's the city supplies, some actual technology or or some money to purchase one. I'd love to see it not just be, you know, the one particular technology. Like I am not an iPad person. I don't want to in any way make Doug not be. And so as as staff's building this, having it kind of be agnostic on what you would choose to use, I think would be nice.
I think we have done a little bit of mission creep here. I think that I would trust Doug's recommendation about data integrity, but we've now gotten to a barriers to entry elected topic into a, are we doing a adequate job of FOIA data protection?
Well, I think to Gladys's point, though, this could be a barrier to entry of of how do you access your emails and and read the packet when you're not getting it printed or or, you know, other.
And we don't want to get to the point where we're saying, hey, prove how poor you are and let us that that's how we're going to know how much support to give you. Submit your finances. We don't want to do that.
So seven fifty plus tablet? No. Yes.
Or to Megan's point, technology. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Okay. Shall we, do we want staff to write that?
Grant's got the look. Just same look I have with everything else. I'm just curious about the budget. Are we going to allocate money for this purpose versus other purposes? That that's, that's all it's on about.
Well, it's a great point to add, especially as we go into the next three cycles of that.
If I may comment on that, based on the previous conversations I had with the mayor and knowing that we would be talking about this at some point in my proposed budget, I have put eighteen thousand for the mayor and then fifty-four thousand for six councillors in next year's budget. The assumption, of course, is that, you know, folks would only be able to access that in an election cycle and not all of you would be in election in the coming year. But to put the maximum amount in case I don't know, someone moved away and the seat was open and to really just provide that maximum out and then keep that steady over the next couple of years rather than having to tailor it based on what I think is going to happen in election cycles. So so it is, that is in my proposed budget for next year. The technology stipend is not in there, but we could add that in in the budget process.
So to to Grant's thing and the timing of this, I think having it in the proposed budget makes it easy for us to talk through this budget cycle and everything. But I guess maybe I'm wondering if we don't want to actually approve this resolution until we've had a chance to look at the budget for the first round and know what that actually means. If there's not really a time constraint on, you know, this needs to be passed in the next month. I think seeing it in two months or, you know, we've done with the budget and.
I'd appreciate the time to prepare a resolution.
Okay, okay.
I guess an obvious point that seems worth mentioning is are some of our constituents will look unfavorably on us voting ourselves of fifteen thousand percent pay increase.
I, one, we're not. And two, this would definitely be passed before the next election cycle occurs.
I just didn't want you guys to think, oh, man, I didn't think of that.
Yeah, we're not voting to pay ourselves more. It's those that come after us.
So in future terms.
Yeah. It would not affect our terms, whatever term they are. The people who are here now, we would still be getting fifty or a hundred dollars a month until our term is up. So.
Right, so, right, so rolling that out actually means there will be a huge change, right? Those who are elected and take office in twenty twenty-five now have the option to take this, would take the stipend, while those who were elected in twenty twenty two, twenty-four, or twenty, yeah, twenty-three, would be at a um, would be at a, would be at the current rate of fifty and a hundred. And there's just really nothing that you can do about that. So you, you just have very different segments based on when you were elected.
But it is, I think, helpful to make clear to the public that none of us are receiving any additional money in this.
In your current terms. If someone is reelected, they would then.
Someone is reelected, then great, but that's a new term. That's the public's will. Um, none of us, as currently constituted, will receive any raise of any kind.
And that we're having a conversation about what it means to be an equitable and inclusive community, and that means those that have a seat at the table.
For me, that's one hundred percent about what this is about. If that's not clear, uh, I think that's where the intention was from the mayor adding this to the agenda. We, we wanna make sure that this is a diverse, equitable council. And I'm glad we all value that. And I think this is a good way to address it.
Awesome. There's no motion.
Great, but I think I heard a flat rate at the amount suggested in the um memo and a technology stipend, which we'll need to work with staff to figure out a little bit more about what that looks like. Great, so we'll bring a resolution for your consideration at a future meeting, not the next one.
It's bothering me to go forward with that. Uh, just other councils' consideration, if, if we were making a percentage of AMI, it automatically changes itself over time. So we wouldn't have to, we or future councils wouldn't necessarily have to go in and arbitrarily adjust it whenever. Um, as opposed to the flat rate calculation. But it's just nothing we need to do now, but a, something that is considered should be, uh, make this decision in the future. That's it.
We good? Or we wanna go to shift to AMI instead?
That's it. If, if you wanna have that conversation, I'd like it now, so I know I have a fair resolution.
AMI.
AMI.
Okay, clear direction. Thank you.
They won't be like, why did they set that particular number, you know?
Okay, thank you very much.
Go ahead, sorry, Tim.
I'll likely be voting now.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Thank you, council.
Bring that together.
Okay, ordinance, couple of them, Jen.
Uh, Your Honor, I'd like to entertain a motion for the second and final reading of ordinance twenty eighty by title only.
So moved.
By Grant.
Second.
Second by Gladys. Discussion. Roll call. Oh, sorry, discussion.
So I am just gonna say, I meant to do this last meeting, but it was very hard to run a meeting and remember what you wanted to say. And so I, I did vote yes on that, this last meeting, and I probably vote yes tonight, but I, I did just wanna do the thing, you know, that happened a lot in a previous council of like, I didn't actually agree with this, but it was the vast majority of council and I am going forward with it. Um, but yeah, it's not my preferred alternative.
Any other discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Counselor Sapina?
Yes.
Counselor Saunders?
Yes.
Counselor Coonahan?
Hi.
Counselor Poulsen?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselors Ann Miller?
Yes.
Your Honor?
Yes.
An ordinance twenty eighty, an ordinance amending Title II Administration and Personnel, Chapter two point five six Urban Rural Agency of the Hood River Municipal Code by transferring the powers of the city Urban Rural Agency to the City Council.
Ordinance twenty eighty has had its second reading by title only and will take effect in thirty days.
Uh, Your Honor, I'd like to entertain a motion for the first reading of ordinance twenty eighty-one by title only.
So moved.
Moved by Megan?
Second.
Second by Grant? Discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Coonahan?
Hi.
Counselor Sapina?
Hi.
Counselor Poulsen?
Yes.
Counselors Ann Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Saunders?
Yes.
Your Honor?
Hi.
Uh, ordinance twenty eighty-one, an ordinance amending the Hood River Municipal Code by adding a new Title eighteen, signs and related regulations, uh, Chapter eighteen point zero three, original art murals to permit. A content neutral bases on certain terms and conditions.
Ordinance twenty eighty-one has had its first reading by title only, will have its second reading in three weeks. Abigail.
Mayor. Thank you. Calling on me for a city manager report. Uh, let's see, I have lots of notes here. Um, I have one kind of complicated request for a letter of support. I'll just explain it to you. Uh, the Visit, Visit Hood River is asking for a letter of support, which would um ask that Clackamas County Tourism be appointed as the Regional Destination Management Organization for this area. So the count, the state is split up into different regions. Um, Clackamas County Tourism has been the the um convener and the regional um head. Uh, Visit Hood River is very happy with Clackamas County and they would like to support that going forward. So it'd be a letter to the um tourism board, the state tourism board, um, for Clackamas County to continue being that regional destination management organization.
Help me understand. I didn't know that. Um.
Uh, I'm so glad that Counselor Poulsen is nodding his head, so hopefully he can help with this.
Rural versus, you know, like, like a more city urban, does that make a difference?
I think the regions are set by the state and, and so I think it's really the Mount Hood area. So Mount Hood and the gorge is the territory that's been put together.
I guess can, can you or Grant explain what, what do they do? Why would it not be Visit Hood River? Are they, are they making decisions about our city or, you know, specific location that we don't have a say in? Or what, what is their role?
I think that their role is just really administrative to be like, maybe the pass through for some of the dollars and then um, let's see, in this letter that we have uh, put together for possible is providing marketing support and educational programs for the whole weed, like things that are regional as opposed to specific to any particular um, agency like Visit Hood River or Kaskat, Skate Locks or something, so.
I think it's a tiny bit like, our Chamber of Commerce wants to continue to be a member of the Meta Chamber of Commerce in Clackamas, and they want us to say yes.
Okay, I mean, I get, but so like, they're not directing the spending of our money in any, okay, then that seems fine.
I agree, it seems fine.
Part of us, our part, it's part of the Region One Act for ODOT that I go and sit on. Uh, that also includes Clackamas, uh, each report on that's like, it's the same sort of regional layout that is applied uh through ODOT Region One, as is this body. Same, same kinda map. Um, and they look at Clackamas, well, the other side of the mountain as the Mount Hood area, just, just like ODOT does. So same, same sort of regional perspective.
Can I get some thumbs on this?
But Clackamas is playing the role of ODOT in that, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, Clackamas is playing the role of the Region One Act.
In that analogy?
This analogy, yeah.
Great. Thank you all. I, I will, I've written a first draft, I'll polish up the letter for the mayor's signature and we can get that out later this week. Thank you. Um, I will be at the League of Oregon City Conference. I leave Wednesday, get back on Saturday. So we'll bring you um information from that, uh, and I'm leaving Dustin in charge, so. Yeah. And then finally, I just want to uh announce and remind you that we have budget meetings coming up next Wednesday. We'll be um, just the budget overview for new members. I think the budget book will be online on in early, mid next week. I'm not sure, or.
It's online.
It's already online, fantastic. Yes, the budget book is online. Um, but this next meeting is not mandatory at all. This is the pick up your book, really for the new members to get an orientation about how the budget works and what this process is going to look like. Um, and then the official budget, Counselor Poulsen?
Do I need to be present to call the meeting to order as chair?
I don't, is it a formal meeting with official, it's not noticed?
Yeah, I mean, people.
It's dropping.
Great, okay, I just read the agenda and said, you know, it's called the order. Oh, no. I'll be in Portland anyway.
I will be in Clemens Falls. So, uh, but then we have the budget meetings the next three Wednesdays, so the fifth uh, or sorry, May uh first, May eighth and May fifteenth. And then I just also wanna just give a public thanks to our finance director who has worked very tirelessly in the last couple of weeks to finish up the book and get it ready. So, uh, really looking forward to these budget meetings. That's, that's it, thanks.
Questions on this? All right, committee reports, Tim.
Nothing from me, mayor.
Thank you, Mark.
Nothing.
Yes, uh, went to the Visit Hood River meeting last Wednesday. Uh, a couple of things to note, we discussed uh at length with uh Abigail and To uh, sort of idea about the um incentive for transient lodging tax. Um, uh, for, for those, you know, adding on to hotels, et cetera. Uh, so at least came out of that saying from them, we would like a letter outlining if they're in favor of the concept and any detail around that as well. Um, much like us, not a vote to say yea or nay, but are you in favor of discussing the concept and what are some points of clarification that you require, et cetera? Uh, yeah, other, other things of note, um, just, you know, in general, things have been picking up, uh, seasonal. Uh, I think implications for that, I certainly can feel that, that the seasons are here. Um, uh, and also I thought it was really cool in September, um, I know Abigail uh and all of us will miss the big trucks um, thing that we do for the first Fridays, but it's going to be Hispanic Heritage instead, so pretty awesome. So we're excited about that. Um, and yeah, um, Mark, we missed you, but uh, we'll see you next time. And then just, just reminding everybody, Mark and I are both um on that committee and we usually tag team, um, so on and so forth, so, yeah.
I was out of town for the last Ruta meeting, so I don't have anything to report.
Yes, I do, and I have to take out my phone because I took a picture to make sure I do not forget all of the talking points. Uh, the Gloria Center will be opening or having its grand opening Friday, May thirty-first, uh, from eleven to one. You most likely have already received an invite, it's an e-vite. Uh, anyone that would like to attend, that's going to take place at twenty-five oh five West Seventh Street in the Dells. Um, why is it important to attend? Because the Gloria Center is the first of its kind. It is a one-stop social service center for low-income community members with an emergency shelter co-located on-site. There will be refreshments, uh, parking on-site is limited, however, there's plenty of street parking in the surrounding areas. Um, if you have not received an invite, please let me know and I'll make sure that Kenny sends one your way.
Thank you. Anything else? Grant?
Um, nothing explicitly from the committee but related to uh ODOT Region One. I had a question for you guys. It's kind of bold. Um, ODOT's been kicking around a number of funding ideas uh, running uh road usage charges, et cetera, et cetera, to try to shore up their budget. Um, as we've talked about before, they have cut maintenance, they've cut a number of things, uh, because gas taxes are what they are, uh, conversion from fuel to electric vehicles on, and everything is more expensive, and they don't have anything indexed to anything. I would like to ask uh counsel's opinion regarding it. I don't know how else to say this except fairly bluntly in order to ask the question. So the, the paradigm that I've seen uh is they are still interested in just building roads, maintaining roads, existing infrastructure, and their idea to uh, fix that is just to raise more money. Um, that may or may not address the systematic problems that come along with that sort of thing of the way that roads are built, maintained, and just the, the volume of those things that go along with development over time. Um, as evidenced by some development patterns here, the development patterns in Happy Valley, where they have, if you guys haven't seen, uh, Sunset not Sunset, uh, Sun, Sunnyside, um, not too long ago was expanded out to five lanes across, all the way out to Happy Valley out towards Damascus, uh, basically putting in large roads through fields in order to meet various points for development purposes, uh, to build homes. Um, that's been ODOT's modus operandi and their systematic approach. Uh, and the, the paradigm is just to raise more funds to do that. Uh, my question is would the other, the rest of council be supportive of me in this meeting? Um, saying, we understand that historically, this is how we have connected communities, uh, developed property, et cetera. Um, however, we don't think that this structure appropriately serves our community uh for the long term, and we're more interested in a more diversified traffic set uh, including uh what's outlined in Smart Streets two point oh, um, various other multimodal modes of transport, et cetera, et cetera. Um, thus potentially reducing uh our maintenance needs, our road building costs and et cetera over time. And voicing that as a structural thing uh in this meeting, in, in support of inter-jurisdictional transfers and some more localized control over that sort of thing.
Wow.
That's a big one. As, as I said, it was going to be a bold question.
I don't think we should embark on this at nine twenty-five, but I'm interested in uh.
Consider it and get back to me later.
In having a space to discuss that with council. So we will put that on a future agenda.
Grant, can you, I guess you referenced some other pieces of knowledge that I don't have. Can you send what you just, you know, and I'm gonna butcher what you even just called it, like the smart streets or?
Uh, yeah, Smart Streets two point oh is, um.
You, you had a list of like three things, but I don't know those. So that would be helpful background.
All right, I think we had a majority for that.
Tabled, tabled.
Thank you. Anything else, Grant? Two things from Mayor's Committee, we got great news from the state, like this morning. Joel said it's public. Let's be cautious. Uh, some great fun, some great funding news came for the Rand Road project. We'll tell more when we know more. And uh news from my Equity Advisory Council, there's the MMIW event on May third at the Readiness Center in the Dells. It's murdered and missing indigenous women. Everyone's invited. They suggest you wear red. I think I sent flyers around. I think the flyers are going up in our lunchrooms and stuff. Uh, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't like crashing the wrong party and uh my advisor said, please come, so I'm going. May, Friday, May third in the Dells, five P M at the Readiness Center. Uh, council comments, Grant?
Uh, yay, budget season. Um.
Are you excited to be chair again?
Yeah, no, no. Um, how, how many times is enough to do that? Chair?
One more.
It's, it's not that hard. I encourage the public to take up the mantle, please. Um. Uh, just personally, uh, after this budget process and whatnot, I am about to be very, very busy with bridge-related things, which is separate from this stuff. Um, so please don't volunteer me to do something for uh, uh, the rest of this year, hopefully. Uh, I'll chip in where I can, but please be considerate with everything else I have. We'll have to do the rest of this year.
Great.
That's all.
Gladys.
Yeah, I just wanna thank Will. He did a great job at the county meeting, talking about the waterfront maximum indebtedness. Sounds like there was overall support from the county and will be giving a letter of support um, for those efforts. I also wanted to uh talk about Cider Fest, which is gonna happen on April twenty-seventh. And the reason that I'm bringing this up is because I wanna give a special shout out to Kat, who is going to be creating a temporary bus stop in front of Ferment. So you could use your gorge pass or you could pay one dollar to board the bus. And it's these kinds of examples or instances that I'd love to see more. And it's these kinds of examples or instances that I'd love to see more of, as we know, these larger events are coming, and we expect an influx of people who may or may not be respectful or, or aware, unaware that we don't have, you know, Uber or a variety of transportation options that I, I really commend them and appreciate them for stepping up and creating a temporary bus stop to help support. Uh, I also wanted to congratulate Megan Ramey and the Hood River County School District. They just received some grants, and I want to pull out my phone to make sure I'm thanking all of the appropriate folks. Um, I can't find it right now. Oh, so the Oregon Department of Transportation, the Governor's Highway Safety Association, and the National Road Safety Foundation. Um, in total, there are twenty-five thousand dollars in grants that will be received for the purpose of safe routes in Odell's, in Odell. Um, this, these grants will help, um, again, create safe routes for kiddos up in the Odell area. Uh, this project was inspired by a similar project at the Hood River Middle School. So I think that's really important, too. How do we continue to create safer routes in areas where we know there is a higher concentration of Latino students that could greatly benefit, um, or just underserved kiddos overall. I do want to bring up that, you know, we've had constituents that continue to come time and time around a Gaza resolution. We did reconsider murals, and so I would love to just continue to put that thought in everyone's head right now. We had members here who state they don't feel included, they don't feel seen, they don't feel valued. Um, a resolution would not give any sort of money, it's just very intentional. We see you, we hear you. We want to include you as part of the conversation. We would not be the only city, county, or uh, municipality that is moving forward to support such efforts. Um, it really broke my heart today to just hear people, um, who feel that way. So I just wanted to bring that up and something for all of us to reconsider.
Uh, I'm gonna try it this way. I tried it another way before. I'm gonna try it this way. Uh, how many of you would like me to put that on the agenda? One, two? I'm looking on the screen.
Me too.
Is that a yes, Tim?
Yep.
Okay. We got Tim, Doug, and Gladys with their hands up. Am I missing anything? Great, that will not be going on the agenda. Uh, Megan?
I, I mean, this has been hard, and I agree with that. It, it breaks my heart, and my personal opinion is very strong on this, and I this whole thing has been really challenging, where my personal opinion and what I think our role as counselors are, are, they are not well-matched, um. And so I do just want to say, I, I understand and sympathize, and I understand why people are continuing to come, and as is their right, um. And I, and it's just been this challenge of, it's not and I'm aware other people disagree on what the role of council is, but from my end, it's just not what we are here to do.
Anything else for commit, for council comments, Megan?
I didn't have anything else.
Doug?
Uh, no, uh, I will just say thank you for bringing that up, uh, Counselor Rivera, um. And, uh, yeah, uh, outside of that, you know, um, you know, a lot of time's been spent on, uh, that resolution, um. And lots of time spent on the murals. I just wanted to publicly thank Jackie for all the, uh, work that she did on it, uh, because she's no longer here to to hear that, but, oh, she is over there, oh, she is over there. Yeah, I didn't see you, I didn't see you over there. Yeah, um. I know you spent a whole lot of time on that, and we, we threw a lot of curveballs and a lot of crazy stuff at you, and I'm glad we arrived at something that was fast, uh, but thanks a lot for all the work you did on that.
Comments, Mark?
Uh, I, I don't have anything. It's twelve thirty, and I pretty much checked out already, but.
Thank you, Tim.
I would like to mention that our very own Gladys Rivera was named one of three Women of Distinction by the Sroptomis of Hood River.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, I will be missing the May eighth meeting, our budget meeting, because I, you know, I should probably go and like, receive this award. Um, so I'll send you all an invite, but I, I will not be offended when I don't see you in the crowd, so, thank you, yeah. I feel incredibly honored to to be nominated with two incredible women that I respect, and that in these last couple of years, I've collaborated with on multiple occasions to create more access, to create healthier outcomes, and yeah, I feel incredibly honored to even be nominated with two incredible powerhouse houses.
Great. Thank you, Tim, for bringing that up. Did you want to talk about regional solutions?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I have to pull up my phone again because I will forget. Um, give me one second. So the North Central Regional Solutions Advisory Committee, known as ARSEC, is a collaborative partnership, uh, to help improve communities, uh, support critical projects and advancing regional priorities for community and economic development. I used to serve as a member and, uh, no longer serve, and the committee is looking for local representation, so county, city, business, philanthropic, tribal, and community-based organizations are highly, uh, encouraged to apply. Um, applications are due May twenty-fourth, and I did forward this email to, um, our mayor and to the uh, city manager, so maybe she can share that with everyone else. Our regional coordinator is named, uh, is Nate Stice, some of you may know him. Um, so that is, I think it's an incredible opportunity for any one of us, if we have the availability to serve on that committee that has direct ties into the governor's office, so as we think about you know, housing funding, other sort of collaboration with other cities within the state of Oregon, I think it would be great for anyone to consider.
Thank you. Anything else? No, okay. Uh, did I get through all the council comments? Did I get to you, Grant? Great. Uh, mayor comments, just the one thing I mentioned briefly, Senator Merkley's coming to town hall, so, you know, to meet our quite powerful elected leader, uh, four thirty, West Side School. Uh, yeah. I, I, I will be there. Um, executive session, I think. I will read the script. The city council will now meet in executive session pursuant to O R S one ninety-two dot six sixty-one H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room or the Zoom, and we will end the public broadcast. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made nor final action taken in executive session. The executive session is anticipated to last twenty minutes. At the end of the executive session, the city council will be adjourned, and action will be taken on a specific topic. We will now discontinue the live feed and record.
Say we will be adjourned?
Did I do that the right way?
What?
I, I had one question about you, said we will be adjourned. I think we will adjourn the executive session, resume the regular meeting, and an action.
At the end of the executive session, the city council meeting will be reconvened.
Correct.
Will continue, and a specific action will occur on a specific topic.
Perfect.
Before city council adjourns.
Exactly right. Thank you.
Uh, we will now just continue the live feed and recording.
I have a quick question, Dan. Laura's wanting, she stay on right now, and then she'll get off?
Um, if, so how, this first part will be just a discussion between, uh, the council and me, and then we'll, then we'll bring Laura in.
I'm not sure how to do that. So, uh, if she, is she, can she hear us?
Yeah.
My recommendation would be she needs to choose to leave the meeting, because if you kick her out, she cannot get back.
Yeah.
So if she can, um, voluntarily leave the meeting, and then Dan can text her when we're ready for her to return.
Correct. Yeah.
And then you'll have to, I guess, unlock the meeting to let her in.
Okay, message received.
I'm gonna grab a snack. Okay, one sec. She's gone.